Doing their due diligence. Uh, this is the most important uh document in our city. And it seems that it is messy and just a disaster waiting to happen. Um, I, I just, I'm really confused about why, and, and I'm hoping that someone from the administration can answer this question. Why was the uh one hundred percent um figure used when it looks like we're going to be using eighty-eight percent? What, what's the rationale for using that?
Uh, Madam President, uh, Madam President, ma'am.
Yes, but the right of course, Mr. Cruz.
All right, so uh. Yeah, that definitely.
Uh, 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 silence yourself.
Uh, thank you. That, that's actually a lot better. So when we were submitting the application to the local, uh, to, uh, to DCA for transitional aid, we had put in for eight point two five million dollars. Uh, when push came to shove, we needed to submit an application for transitional aid with a budget. And so when we did the numbers, we plugged in the eight point two five uh number, eight point two five million dollars, because that is what our um legislative uh uh um uh district uh told us that uh, that we could apply for. That's what the uh, that's what they were told that the city was going to be receiving. And so that is the number that we plugged in into the, into the budget, eight point two five million dollars. Uh, once we were there, uh, they, they um, um, another, another one of the things that we had discussed was the, uh, as, as Janet mentioned, we were um, we had proposed a, a, a different percentage um, and they um, they, which they told us on a phone conversation with them. They told us to use, which I believe Janet, wasn't it ninety-three? Hold on, let me look at the number here. Uh, ninety-two point eight-five, uh, councilman. So um, uh, they actually, on a phone conversation with DCA, they say, use that number. Uh, so you're gonna go into the twenty seventeen, eighteen, and nineteen budget year and do the calculation from those three, uh, uh, do an average for those three. And that will be the average that we will allow you to use. So when we did that, those calculations, it came to ninety-two point two one percent. Uh, ninety-three point two one, my apologies, ninety-three point two one. And so that is the number that we went with. That is the calculation they had when we had the meeting. Uh, but they um, when we were, we went to the meeting, we were actually surprised when DCA then said, um, you are going to be allowed to use eighty-eight percent. Because the week before, or just a few days before, they had told us that we could use the ninety-two, um, um, the ninety-two, ninety-three point two one percent. So that's where the difference comes, uh, councilman. And uh, and, and uh, I guess they had a little bit of confusion there. Uh, by no means are we trying to be deceptive to the body. Uh, we did what we were instructed to do when we, uh, when we submitted the numbers. And that we were actually shocked that they went from the ninety-three point two five to eighty-eight percent.
You're, you're muted, councilman.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have. Appreciate it.
Yes, um, I'm waiting, um, I'm, Mr. Cruz, I'm about to uh get my notes from the meeting while Mr. um Colin is correcting the resolution. Um, and before he corrects it, I, I just would like to share uh this information from the meeting.
Um, I just have a question and I'm, you know, um, to Janet Schoenhardt and um, Mr. Cruz. Since you were at the meeting and you heard the discussion and the commitment from DCA when they, when Melanie Walter made it and stated that she will keep, you know, the city of Trenton, our municipality taxes flat, zero increase for fiscal year twenty-one. Why didn't you guys raise your hand at that minute and, and set, and, and, and shared that they had incorrect um numbers?
Um, uh, uh, Councilwoman, uh, we actually um, we, we were, we started calculating. Um, I don't know if you saw us talking back and forth, we were doing the calculations. And uh, uh, we even had to call uh, uh, City Hall, uh, uh, email City Hall to, to run some calculations for us uh, on our, on our numbers. Um, one of the, one of the things that, that were mentioned at the meeting was that we were getting uh these millions of dollars that total almost ten million dollars. But if you look at the money that we are supposed to be getting in transitional aid, um, everything that we're getting is not what we got last year. Last year, at least, we got, I believe, three point two five million dollars in cash. This year, we got zero percent, uh, uh, zero, zero money in cash. Everything that we are getting is actually money from buckets that they have uh within state departments. Uh, similar to what they did with the uh, with the police um intel center that they um, um, that we're working with the state police. Uh, and there is no uh, uh, money coming into the city um, uh, in cash. If they would have given us some money in cash, that would have been uh, a savings. And uh, of course, the city wouldn't be seeing a uh, the, the nine point uh seven percent uh, uh, tax increase, nine point seven cents tax increase. So uh, this year, we're not getting, we're not getting cash. We're getting it all in um, in buckets that, that's, that the department has. So one of the things they mentioned is you're gonna get one point four million dollars for parks and libraries. Uh, that's money that uh, we normally, i- it's not cash coming into the city. It's actually a bucket that we can go and, and, and uh, and take money from, but it's not cash coming in. Uh, the same thing goes for all of the other things. They said that they had five million dollars for the city uh, for them to uh, that we, that the city can use for uh, for streets and uh, and other uh, infrastructure work around the city. As you are aware, all of that work is done through capital budget, not necessarily from our operating fund. We need money for our operating fund, for our operating, for our operating budget. Not for, you know, for, I mean, but it, you know, I, I don't want to sound like I'm being uh, ungrateful to the state because any money that we receive is, is a plus to the city, however, is not cash. It's not money that we can use for our operating budget. So that, that is the reality. In that meeting, they, they didn't mention that. And uh, when uh, they, they, i- if you remember, they actually used like the last three minutes of their speech for them to uh, uh, tell us, uh, you know, what the actual numbers were going to be, and then the meeting ended. So there was really no room for questions. And when we started questioning, uh, uh, as of today, we have yet to receive uh, an official document from them, by the way. It's been two weeks since the meeting, and we have not received anything from them.
Okay, so let me just, and let me.
President?
Uh, excuse me, Councilwoman Vaughn, I need to, I need to put this on the record. Okay, so I have here uh, an email that was sent over from Janet Schoenhardt on April the seventeenth to uh, to Tina and reference to the budget. And it says, hi Tina, I am aware that we don't have an adopted budget, but we didn't have the transitional aid number until yesterday. The guideline to the budget in November was not relayed to me. I am now in charge of getting this budget completed, and I am working toward that. I hope to have a completed budget by next week. This was in April of twenty twenty. Tina wrote back and stated, you were sent budget notes in November following budget submission as usual. You and the auditor, the administration, and separately council were advised, Tina Zap, uh, Zap Zappucci has now also reset to facilitate your current activity. This is uh Janet saying, I have a few questions concerning the transitional aid money. And Tina replied, you can put eight point two five zero million in the budget as transitional aid. This came through in April, April the seventh, April the seventeenth, twenty twenty at one twelve P M. So for you to say, or anyone to say, that you submitted a budget with a hundred percent when in April the seventeenth, there is here in black and white, you were advised that you could submit up to eight point two five zero eight million two hundred and fifty in transitional aid. So it never should have been one hundred percent. And then when we got into the meeting, they reconfigured it and said, listen, we will allow you to put the eighty-eight percent more in, add the eighty uh, eighty-eight percent more, which they end up adding the ten million to it instead of the eight uh, eight million. So there is no way that we should be short here because it's all in black and white in April, uh, 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 April the seventeenth. So I, I don't know why we're going back and forth here. I, I just don't understand that. You can't say that you didn't know what was go, what should have went into that budget to DCA when DCA has it here in black and white, what you should have submitted. And then they even gave you room with the, with the uh, that they gave you, that, that, that they're giving the city. So we should not be talking about taxes for the residents. So it's then to say that you didn't have, have to raise your hand in the meeting, that, that's not true. So I, I, I just, I, I just don't understand right now where you're coming from uh, saying that you submitted a hundred percent increase when we knew good and time well in April the seventeenth, that we could not do that.
Uh, Ma- Madam President, if I may, this is Colin Cherry.
All right.
Um, the eight point two five million is in fact what we submitted. Uh, that email from April seventeenth is for fiscal year twenty twenty. And that is the number that we used for fiscal year twenty twenty. And it is also the number that we used for fiscal year twenty twenty-one. But as uh, as you heard at that meeting, they told us to use eighty-five percent of that number, which is what you will see in the current introduced uh budget. Uh, it's approximately seven million dollars. Uh, but we will touch on all of these points during the, the presentation, and I have some of those numbers um displayed for you.
All right, thank you.
Council President, Council President. I just gotta, I just gotta throw up a red flag here. I don't feel that we need to go into any meetings until we get clarity from DCA because we came out of the meeting with a commitment from the state that they were going to give us the ten million um, uh, in transitional aid and ten million, and I asked a question to make sure that I heard him correctly, for clarity. And Melanie responded, yes, ten million and transitional aid and ten million from the Capital City Aid Program that we get by statute, by statute, by statute. So I don't know what's going on here, but it seemed like somebody took some liberties to change some stuff. And I, I don't feel comfortable agreeing to any of this because I know what I heard and what I agree to for the citizens of this city when I came out of that meeting. And they agreed, and everybody sat there and agreed and walked out when, when they told us, the state said they will keep Trenton taxes flat. And I want to hear from the state what has changed. And I hope that uh, you and or the Council President or somebo, I mean, uh, the Council Vice President go back to, circle back to Lieutenant Governor and ask her what's changed because I'm not believing the administration at this point, I'm really not.
Well, before we do anything, we're going to hear the presentation this evening that the administration has uh, put together for the body. And then um, we will, um, um, they can entertain um questioning after that, but we will hear their presentation um, this evening um, for the introduced uh budget. So the first thing we need to do is go back to Mr. Colin and find out where he is with the resolutions and the changing of the language. Mr. Colin?
Yes, ma'am. So I just inserted the language into the paragraph. Uh, as Mr. Cruz indicated, I do not have the original. That would come from Ms. Schoenhardt's office and be with the administration, so I'll make sure that we get it, an original change. But the language for the first paragraph has been changed as follows. Whereas the City Council of the City of Trenton desires to make application to the local finance board for its approval of a proposed cash deficit waiver in the amount of thirteen million eight hundred and thirty-seven thousand seven hundred and nineteen dollars pursuant to NJSA forty A four dash five three E. So it's just an insertion in the amount of thirteen million eight hundred and thirty-seven dollars, eight, eight hundred and thirty-seven thousand seven hundred and nineteen dollars uh, after cash deficit waiver and before pursuant, and that is the amendment to the resolution.
And that is.
Yes, ma'am. When the vote time for the vote comes up, if you want me to reread the amendment, I'd be happy to do that.
And um, Ms. Schoenhardt, that, is that fine with you, the language that we've changed?
That's fine.
I'll send you the language, Ms. tomorrow, Ms. Schoenhardt, with the insert.
Thank you.
All righty. Um, so I would like to move forward with the two resolutions that need to be uh voted on before we hear the presentation or after we hear the presentation.
Yes, ma'am. Uh, uh, Council President McBride would like to uh, do the two resolutions prior to the introduction of the budget. Do I have a motion? This first one is Resolution twenty-one dash oh one-two. A resolution making application to the local finance board pursuant to, to the local finance, pursuant to NJSA forty A. Um, sorry. Thank you. A resolution making application to the local finance board pursuant to NJSA forty A colon four dash five three point three E. Uh, once again, language for the first paragraph. The first paragraph is changed to read, whereas the Trent, the City Council of the City of Trent desires to make application to the local finance board for its approval of a proposed cash deficit waiver in the amount of thirteen million eight hundred and thirty-seven thousand seven hundred and nineteen dollars pursuant to NJSA forty A colon four dash forty-five point three E. Do I have an introduction for Resolution twenty-one dash oh one-two? Have an introduction, Council President Caldwell Wilson, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second, but Council President McBride, roll, please, Blake.
Yes.
Council Vice President Caldwell Wilson.
Yes.
Mr. Harrison.
Yes.
Mr. Michelle. Mr. Michelle, your votes are? We'll come back to Councilwoman Michelle. Mr. Rodriguez.
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn. Councilmember Vaughn, you're muted, I can't hear you, ma'am.
Umute yourself, Councilwoman Vaughn.
Oh, um, I'm gonna abstain.
Yes, ma'am. Councilmember Vaughn abstains. Mr. Michelle, have you been able to get back connected, sir? Councilmember Michelle? I'll have to mark him as absent unless you want me to proceed. Council President McBride.
Yes.
So the resolution passes four two to one, I'm sorry, four, my apologies, five to five zero to one, one extension. Next, we have Resolution twenty-one dash oh one-three, a resolution authorizing to utilize the three-year average method in computing the reserve for uncollected taxes for the city of Trenton. Do I have an introduction?
So move.
I have an introduction, my Council President Caldwell Wilson. I have a second by Mr. Blake, though, now call the roll. Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Council Vice President Caldwell Wilson.
Yes.
Councilmember Harrison.
Yes.
Councilmember Michelle. Councilmember Rodriguez.
Yes.
Councilmember Vaughn.
Uh, um, can I say something before I vote?
It's up to the Council President.
No, no, Councilwoman, you need to place a vote now at this time.
I abstain.
Yes, ma'am. Council President McBride.
Yes.
Mr. Michelle, have you joined us back, sir? Councilmember Michelle, if you are speaking, we are unable to hear you, sir. If you'll exit out of the meeting and enter back in.
Are you receiving me now?
Yes, sir. Uh, what is your vote on twenty-one dash one, is it oh one-three?
To receive that?
Uh, the iron A, sir, on twenty-one dash oh one-three, sir?
Yes.
Thank you, sir. And your vote, what was your vote on twenty-one dash oh one-two, sir?
Yes.
Thank you, sir. Council President, we are ready to proceed with the presentation for the introduction of the budget. Would you like to proceed with Mr. Cruz and Ms. Schoenhardt's presentation?
Yes, we would.
Yes, ma'am, so I'm going to do a little screen sharing right now. And Mr. Cruz, you have the floor. When you are ready for me to move a slide, please say so, and I will move the slide forward.
All right, uh, uh, thank you, Mr. Conlon, uh, Madam President, and the rest of the body. Good evening. Uh, this, uh, uh, tonight, we will, uh, the mayor is introducing the twenty twenty-one fiscal budget uh, for the city of Trenton. Uh, um, for the last ten years, Colin Cherry has been the one doing the budget introduction. And I don't want to jinx it. I will allow for uh, for Colin to proceed uh, as soon as I just do the um, the, the, the opening. And uh, he, he'll take it from here, so it's Colin Cherry, uh, not uh, Ms. Schoenhardt. Um, so uh, uh, next, uh, next slide, Mr. Conlon. All right, so uh, for the twenty twenty-one budget uh, budget timeline, uh, and, and if you haven't received it yet, we will be sending that to you um, uh, sometime, uh, either today or tomorrow morning, so that you can also have it. Uh, but this is, uh, I'm just gonna go to the um, to the main point of the, of the timeline. Um, starting with today being the number one, the, being the first step where the mayor introduces the uh, the budget to the council, uh, uh, January nineteenth. Um, and council votes on the introduction. Um, what the council does is that they, okay, there's uh, feedback, Mr. Conlon, I'm sorry. Um, okay, let me try again. All right, so, so the budget is introduced by the mayor and uh, uh, council with their vote acknowledges that the, that the budget is being introduced. Uh, there's feedback again. Um, uh, so uh, for the month of February, uh, with the help of the Council President and the clerk, we have identified dates where the administration uh, will be coming forward uh, uh, to council uh, for budget hearings uh, for the month of February. Uh, we are going to uh, set aside the month of March. Um, if you look at the timeline, uh, we are going to set the month of March pretty much to do any uh, any knickknacks that are necessary to uh, to complete the budget. Um, do um, uh, any, any budget amendments that we need to do and give DCA enough time for them to uh, go through the budget, give us their approval, and then we are counting on uh, the um, on having the budget introduction as requested by DCA. I mean, the budget, the budget adoption uh, on April first of twenty twenty-one. And those are like the four, uh, the, the four major um, uh, points that we will be um, uh, that are important on this timeline. Um, uh, everything else, like the small details, you can read when uh, you know, when you get the um, when you get the presentation or you can read as, as we go along on the presentation. Um, for the, uh, for the remainder of the tw, uh, of the twenty twenty-one budget year. Uh, uh, Colin, do you wanna take it from here? And then I'll just chime in when uh, when necessary.
Um, yes, thank you. Uh, good afternoon, uh, members of council, good afternoon, member, or good evening, members of council, good evening, members of the public. Uh, and thank you for the opportunity uh, to make this budget presentation to you this evening. Um, Mr. Conlon, uh, next slide, please. Um, so this is our uh, comparison of the FY twenty twenty adopted budget with the FY twenty twenty-one introduced budget. And you can see the variations in the column to the right. Uh, I won't go through all of them. Um, you can um, take a look at them uh, at your leisure. But what I would like to highlight, uh, because uh, Ms. Schoenhardt uh, spoke about it earlier. If you take a look under revenue, where it says delinquent taxes, uh, you'll see that we have introduced in this budget twenty-six million three hundred and twenty-six thousand four hundred and forty-five dollars in delinquent taxes compared to uh, three million four hundred thousand from last year, which is up by almost twenty-three million dollars. Uh, that is a bit of an anomaly. Uh, those aren't truly delinquent taxes. But as was being explained earlier, unfortunately, our second quarter uh, twenty twenty tax bills, the ones that would normally be due, um, that would go out around May. Those, we were not able to uh, send those out until July. And we did not receive the money until August. So that money is actually revenue in this fiscal year instead of last fiscal year. Uh, what that means in practice is that this fiscal year represents five quarters worth of taxes. And you'll see that extra quarter represented there uh, under delinquent taxes. Uh, so I did want to explain that uh, for everyone because that is uh, a, a very unusual thing uh, that we do not ever anticipate to have to do again. Now, unfortunately, uh, that uh, delay in uh, tax collection is what caused this um, confusion over the reserve for uncollected taxes. So something I do want to make clear is that when we talk about using eighty-eight percent for our collection rate, that is separate from what we use for transition aid. Those are, those aren't related numbers. Uh, essentially, the reserve for uncollected taxes for those uh, uh, and the public who are unfamiliar with it, it's uh, essentially a buffer that the state requires us to budget for in the case that we end up being unsuccessful in collecting some of our taxes. And the way it is uh, determined is based on your history of collecting taxes. And the city of Trenton actually has a very strong history. Our general average is about ninety-two to ninety-three percent collection rate. However, because of our um, inability to count the second quarter taxes for last fiscal year, that would have dropped our annual uh, collection rate to about seventy-eight percent. We initially used a three-year average, which set us at about eighty-five percent. Unfortunately, based on the meeting we had in Lieutenant Governor's office, uh, we were able to use an eighty-eight percent collection rate. Now, that still presents, if you take a look under the reserve for uncollected taxes, which is the second to last line on this uh, slide, it still represents an increase of about six point five million dollars. So that is an appropriations increase of about six point five million dollars, which we view as um, a statutory requirement, but we already have that cash in hand. So we do anticipate, assuming our collection rates remain similar to what they have been in the past, that some of this money uh, will um, be collected this year, and we will be able to can retain that money for the future, um, to use in the future. Due to budgeting requirements, we cannot take it into our uh, budget in FY twenty twenty. But when we get to FY twenty twenty-three, if there is such excess money, we will be able to take it in as surplus in FY twenty twenty-three. Um, next slide, please. Uh, this is just a quick overview. Uh, we are proposing a budget uh, total appropriation, including grants of twenty-three point one, twenty, two hundred and thirty-one point one million dollars, uh, which is an increase of nine point seven million as compared to FY twenty twenty. But as I noted before, six and a half of that nine point seven is from an increase in the reserve for uncollected taxes. Um, this also has a proposed municipal tax levy that has increased by one point six. Um, this also has a proposed municipal tax levy that has increased by one-point-six million. Uh, we are currently seeking eighty-two-point-two million dollars in tax revenue compared to eighty-point-six million, uh, in FY twenty-twenty, and that's a little under a two percent increase. Uh, next slide, please. Uh, I just wanted to present a summary of our revenues. Our revenue total, uh, excluding grants is two-hundred-and-twenty-eight-point-seven million dollars, and our grants, uh, make up the remaining two-point-four million dollars of appropriations. Um, we are requesting eight-point-two-five million in transition aid, which is consistent with the, uh, the notice that, uh, council president read, uh, into the record that we received last fiscal year. However, based on the meeting we had with the Lieutenant Governor and a follow-up directive, uh, in writing from our DCA monitor, we were told to budget for eighty-five percent of that aid, uh, which is why you'll see in the budget a seven-million-dollar number, not an eight-point-two-five-million-dollar number. Uh, we budgeted for it in cash, and this is where some confusion, uh, and some conversation with the state is going to happen as we go through this budget process before adoption. As Mr. Cruz noted, what was discussed in that meeting was not cash aid, but then subsequently, they did tell us to anticipate seven-million dollars in our budget, which, of course, is anticipated as cash. So we aren't exactly sure what we will be receiving from the state or how, but that is a process that we are going to go through collaboratively with council and with the state, as was our pledge at that meeting, to work together on this, on this problem, uh, as we move forward prior to adoption. Uh, and I did just wanna note here that COMTRA and the energy receipt tax, we are budgeting for twenty-two-point-five million for COMTRA and thirty-six-point-three million, uh, for the energy receipt tax. Uh, next slide, please. Uh, this is just a, a visual of what our revenue looks like. So as you can see, we receive about a third of our revenue from state aid and about a third from taxes. Uh, I will note again that delinquent taxes makes up twelve percent of our revenue this year, but that is an anomaly. And, um, why we are so concerned about, uh, so sensitive about the tax rate this year and making sure that we don't, um, cut too much, is that this twenty-three million dollars of revenue that we received in this fiscal year is not going to be repeated. That was a one-time, uh, essentially, uh, anomaly caused by the delay in collecting taxes, which was contributed to in part by the pandemic and a desire to provide some sort of, uh, delayed relief to, um, members of the public. But that money will not appear in the next fiscal year. So if we, uh, if we reduce our incoming revenue, uh, too much, then we run the risk of being substantially behind in the next fiscal year. Uh, next slide, please. Uh, this is a specific breakdown, because I know that this was mentioned in that meeting, uh, but is also something that council has asked for in the past. This is a pie chart for just state aid. So the thirty-three percent of our budget that is made up of state aid, this shows you how that, uh, aid is taken in. So about half of that, or almost half of that, is the energy receipts tax credits. Thirty percent is COMTRA. Um, a little less than ten percent is transition aid, and then a little over ten percent is capital city aid. Um, next slide, please. Um, we just wanted to show state aid over the years. So as you can probably see, um, the, uh, the Y-axis there is in millions of dollars. And you'll see that we received our highest state aid in recent history, uh, in two thousand and ten. Um, obviously, it lowered once, uh, Chris Christie took office, and the original capital city aid was removed. Uh, but this mayor has gotten us, uh, with partnership with council and the, uh, governor's office, we have improved our state aid, uh, forecast. Now, uh, as I mentioned before, um, the director of DCA in the meeting with Lieutenant Governor did mention some potential new avenues for aid to the city. Um, but as Mr. Cruz stated, we haven't received anything in writing yet, so those do not appear in the budget. But they do stand the possibility of increasing that number for twenty-twenty-one, uh, which we would, of course, be excited to see. Uh, next slide, please.
Mr., um, um, Colin, uh, Mr. Chair, um, when you did your, uh, chart showing just how much, uh, your pie chart showing how much we received from the state, um, could you go back so that we could explain to the, um, public what the consolidated, the municipal property tax, uh, receipt are? Could you explain that to the public?
Uh, yes, ma'am. Uh, the consolidated municipal property tax relief, uh, aid is, is aid that the state provides to every municipality in the state for the purpose of reducing, uh, municipal taxes. Now, uh, something that is, it, it has a formulaic component, so there is some amount that we receive by formula. However, in addition, Trenton has lobbied over the years and been successful in converting some of the aid that used to be transitional aid, so, uh, competitive, something that we'd have to apply for every year, into the COMTRA. Uh, and that has been a great boon for the city. Uh, it is something that we started long ago. Um, as I'm sure you recall, Madam President, uh, when we first entered this transition aid program after Chris Christie, uh, removed, uh, capital city aid, we received, uh, twenty, roughly twenty-five million dollars in transition aid. Uh, we have successfully converted a substantial portion of that to consolidated municipal, um, property tax relief aid, which has allowed us to receive that every year without having to worry about, um, the possibility of not being awarded it through the transition aid program or being awarded only eighty-five percent. And the primary use of that COMTRA is for, um, paying the debt service of the city of Trenton. It is less flexible in its usage than transition aid, but, um, the city of Trenton has plenty of avenues to spend these dollars, uh, so that, that lack of flexibility has not been a problem for us.
So, so let me ask you this, Mr. Cherry, 'cause I just, I wanna be clear, and I want the public to be clear. So on the, uh, municipal property tax relief, is any of that money related to the, um, funds that the state collects for us under the public utility gross receipts and the franchise taxes and the energy tax receipts and so forth? Is any of that included in that, uh, municipal property tax relief?
No, ma'am. And the, the energy receipts, uh, specifically, have their own section on this, um, pie chart. And you'll see that the energy receipts, we actually receive more in energy receipts than we do in COMTRA every year. Um, this year, we're receiving about thirty-six million dollars in, uh, energy receipts.
Okay. And when you get to the energy receipts, break that down to the public so they'll understand why we're getting that money and how that money is generated?
Absolutely. So, um, that money is entirely formulaic. Every community in the state of New Jersey, uh, receives some amount of energy receipts, uh, tax credit. Uh, and that, that formula has a lot of, uh, moving parts, um, but it has to do with population, um, proximity to things that generate, uh, energy services and general infrastructure. So for example, typically places that have, um, power generation or heavy infrastructure will receive more than a rural community. Uh, so this is another, uh, set of aid that is not competitive. We don't apply for it. It's simply granted to us every year based on a formula. Uh, does that answer your question, Madam President?
Yes, I, I, I just wanted, I wanted more so because when I, um, when I was looking up, uh, the, the municipal tax, uh, um, aid and how we received it, it had more so a lot to do with the fact that the state collects a certain amount of money for properties that, uh, federal properties, state properties, and county properties that you do, that sits in this, on the cities, um, in the city, uh, borders. And so I thought that you were gonna speak to that, but I could speak to it during the, um, during the, uh, budget meetings.
Yes, we, okay, excellent. Um, this is just a summary of appropriations. So we just wanted to show you some of the things, um, that make up the budget, um, at least the, the big ticket items. Um, I'll let you read this, this at your leisure. Um, uh, Mr. Cruz mentioned that we will be distributing this to members of, of council. We will also post it on the city's website, uh, as is customary, so that members of the public will have easy access to this presentation as well. Um, the one I do wanna note, uh, especially is that, as you know, the, I noted the reserve for uncollected taxes increase here as well, which again, the reason for that increase is just because we collected taxes in August instead of in May or June, uh, which is that final, uh, bullet. Uh, next slide, please. Um, this is a pie chart of our appropriations outlook. Um, and just again, I wanted to provide a visual representation, uh, for members of council and for the public regarding what our, uh, expenditures, our appropriations will be. And as noted, there is a cash deficit of approximately six percent, but as we said, that deficit exists for the, the reason we, we have discussed that, um, since we weren't able to collect those taxes in FY twenty-twenty, we had to carry that, um, remaining balance as a deficit into FY twenty-twenty-one. So we have that cash, uh, as you saw from the fi- the previous slide, but from an accounting perspective, it was a deficit in FY twenty-twenty, and therefore, it appears as a deficit on the books in FY twenty-twenty-one. Uh, next slide, please. Uh, this is a summary of the tax impact of the budget as a whole. Um, and the thing I know is important to council is the introduced budget has a, a tax rate increase from three dollars and sixty-six cents to three dollars and seventy-five cents, which is approximately a nine-point-seven cent increase, which is two-point-six percent. Um, now, as I said, there still appears to be some, um, some distinction between what the state told us in summary at the end of the meeting with Lieutenant Governor and what our written directive to anticipate eighty-five percent of last year's transition aid would equate to. If the city did receive the additional three million dollars mentioned by, uh, the director at that meeting in cash, so allocated as we saw fit, that three million dollars would be enough to, uh, effectively eliminate this, uh, tax increase, uh, or at least the vast majority of it.
Senator, Mr. Chair.
Counsel President. Said, you said a cash, uh, award in amount of three million to allocate as you see fit. But if the cash, if there is an allotment of cash, whether or not you can allocate it the way you see fit or the way they've outlined it to be spent, it still should apply to the reduction of that tax, uh, of that tax increase. Uh, Councilwoman Caldwell-Wilson.
Um, yes, Mr. Cherry?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, the, you, you say on this that, that, that the increase equates to two-point-six percent. Aren't you supposed to get a waiver to go beyond two percent?
Um, we would need a waiver if we were going beyond two percent in the increase in the levy, which is the total dollar amount collected. Um, the, the waiver, the, the, um, requirement is not on the tax rate. The rate is determined separately.
Okay.
Um, and madam, uh, I'm sorry, it sounds like I'm echoing. Um, the, uh, allocations that the state spoke to us about and what, uh, Mr. Cruz was speaking about earlier, what we're concerned about is if they require appropriations. So for example, if they tell us that we must spend the money on, uh, I believe that they mentioned an inspector general. Uh, if they tell us that they wish to give us a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for an inspector general, uh, we have not budgeted for an inspector general. So we would have to add those on the appropriation side and then add the hundred and fifty thousand on the revenue side. So it would actually be budget neutral if that was the case. It would not serve to reduce taxes because it would be, uh, allocating an additional cost to the city as well as funding for that cost. So we're still, we're not quite understanding, because again, we haven't received, uh, in writing what the state's proposal for their transition aid is. But if we do receive ten million dollars in cash, then it would reduce this, um, this tax rate to nearly zero. The concern is if we, if we do not receive it in cash, if we receive it as, um, separate, uh, expenditures, like, like adding an inspector general or some other service that would be in addition to our current appropriations, then it would not serve to reduce the tax rate. But, uh, we don't know those details yet, and that's something that we will certainly be partnering with council, uh, to work with the state on through this next, uh, next process. Uh, I did wanna note that, I'm sure council has been alarmed, as I have been, uh, in the loss of ratables for the last few years. Um, we are still losing ratables, but I did wanna note that that loss has slowed substantially. So, uh, from eighty million, uh, a few years ago, to sixty to forty million, we're down to losing only fifteen million dollars in ratables, which is still troubling, but I did want to note for council's, um, attention that that rate of loss is slowing substantially. Um, next slide.
Mr. Cherry, there are no more slides.
Fantastic. Uh, that is the end, uh, of our presentation. I'd be more than happy to answer any questions that council.
President McBride?
Yes.
Thank you. Let me, uh, I just got a new laptop from the city, and I don't know why it is, um, it's not working. I'm gonna try to go through it. Um, but, uh, thank you for that budget introduction, um, Mr. Cherry. However, I am concerned about the lack of a plan with the budget or how the budget is going to address many of the concerns that vex our city. It seems that this is just a bunch of numbers without a coherent strategy or a coherent plan to fix what ails our city. And I think it would be appropriate to hear how our budget is going to be used to address our issues. And I haven't heard that. I haven't heard of what targeted investments we are going to make in our city. I haven't witnessed a vision. It just strikes me as, you know, you, you all have had a significant amount of time to put together a plan to address our city's issues, and it would seem that the budget is where you do that at, or where you do that. And I'm just concerned that there's no, there's no plan, there's no vision. There's just like, yeah, let's submit a budget really late and have no idea about how or why we should support the budget that is introduced. It, it's just, you know, generally, you have a budget address, like elected officials, executives have a budget address where they say, hey, this is what, we're gonna- hey, this is, we're, we're gonna have a budget to talk about how we're gonna move the city forward. And this is the, I believe, third budget cycle that there's no vision, there's no plan. And I just think that there should be a plan. There should be, hey, we're making strategic investments in the Economic Development Department or we think it's a good idea to make investments in the Recreational Department or in the Public Works Department. None of that is here. Now, maybe you may do that in the individual hearings, but it would be good, would be logical to hear that sort of general plan in a meeting, in the initial budget introduction. You know, the fact that it's late is one thing, but what are we gonna do in the future to make sure that we're not at this juncture next fiscal year? There, there has to be a plan and I just, I'm just disappointed by a lack of a coherent plan from the administration. I, I'm disappointed in the lack of a vision. Because right now it just, just seems like a bunch of numbers put together at the last minute with no cohesive strategy to address our city's most challenging issues.
He says, thank you.
And so, council members.
And so, and so, you know, I, I generally support the administration, but this is unacceptable. Like this is just, we, we pay people a lot of money to do this and, and the mayor and the Chief of Staff, they have to come better than this. This is unacceptable. This is the third budget cycle that we have no plan to address this issue. We're spending 200, over 200 million dollars, a quarter of a billion dollars without a plan, without a vision. And it's downright biblical, without a vision, the people shall perish. What, what are we getting for 200 million dollars? What is the vision of this administration? What is the, what is the plan? Cause I don't hear it, I don't see it.
Oh.
And, and, and the budget is where you do that. That, that's, it's the most important document. It's where your priorities are. And so to submit it, the, you would think that if you're the last municipality to submit a budget, that you would have a roadmap to address these issues. How are we going to stop our ratables from decreasing? Are we gonna make investments in particular areas of our city government? I don't see that. I don't hear the narrative. And I'm generally very quiet when it comes to the budget because I don't know much about the budget. I'm new on this council. So I try to sit back and I try to learn, I try to see what works. But this is the third fiscal year in a row that there is no coherent plan. It's unacceptable. The third one, we didn't have one the first year, we didn't have one the second year and we don't have one the third year. How do we know where we're going if we don't have a roadmap? And a budget is a roadmap. So I just want to reiterate that I'm very disappointed about the lack of a plan, uh, the lack of a strategy to address these issues. And I just believe that this administration has to do a lot better. And it starts at the top because I don't know the guts or a vision. I don't know what the vision is, I don't know what the plan is. And there has to be an overarching plan and right now we don't have it. So, um, I'm going to, uh, stop now, but I'm gonna be asking a lot of questions because I mean, it's al, it's almost already too late to do this, but we need to make sure that the next fiscal year is started, you know, we need to start that process immediately because we're just spending money without a plan, without rhyme or reason, without a strategy to address our issues and without having a plan, we're gonna be exactly where we've been, if not worse. Thank you.
Council President.
Thank you. Uh, 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 Councilwoman Caldwell-Wilson, before you speak, I would like for everyone that is not a part of this council to mute themselves and if you interject your opinion in this meeting without this being public comment, I will have you rejected from this meeting. Go right ahead, Councilwoman Caldwell-Wilson.
Yeah, I, I just kinda wanted to make a statement, you know, um, because Mr. Mr. Blakely brought up a good point, but it's my understanding that the mayor's State of the City address is supposed to address all those issues. Unfortunately, council didn't get an invite to the State of the City address this year, so we were unable to hear what he had done and what his plans were for the city this year. That's all I wanted to say.
Um, Madam President, this is Adam Cruz. Can, if I may be recognized just to, um, address, uh, all right, well, thank you, Madam President. So, uh, uh, Mr. Blakely, uh, I, I, I want to apologize to you because it appears that you were expecting perhaps, uh, a, uh, uh, a more, a, a more descriptive plan. Unfortunately, because of the timeframe that we have and, uh, and yes, you are correct, the budget is actually a very important budget in a, a, a budget document, uh, for the city. Uh, however, because of the timeframe that we have, normally a budget introduction addresses pretty much the, a summary of everything that is being included in the budget. And as you go along, as you mentioned, you want to hear more from the departments, uh, when we do the individual, um, um, budget hearings. Uh, you will be hearing from every department director.
Mr. Blakely could speak. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. So, uh, yes, so you will be hearing from every department director exactly. What is the vision for every department, uh, moving forward? If, if it's something where council feels that we need to add additional, um, additional, uh, this, a more descriptive plan, um, uh, for the budget, uh, we can do so. I mean, there will be, uh, the city administration with the help of council will be trying again this year to move from the fiscal year budget to a, uh, calendar year. And that will start the day after we, uh, adopt this budget and we, we need to do a transitional budget for the remainder of 2021 to then begin the process of doing a calendar year for the year 2022. So, um, uh, uh, so Mr. Blakely, I, 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 you know, I'm, I'm not upset at your point. Uh, we will, uh, be more descriptive next time, but as you are aware, there is actual, yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, it, it, it's already seven o'clock, it, it's already seven o'clock and, and you know, the, the introduction is taking a little long, but yes, we will take that point and, uh, make it more descriptive the next time.
Understand that we're conducting the business of the city and
Can you please remove that?
And you need to reject them if they cannot, if they cannot control themselves when, um, council members and administrators are speaking.
Council President.
Yes, go right ahead, Mr. Councilman Harris.
Well, my question was, we met with the DCA administration and members of council. Before we got up and left that room, we should have had in writing what the DC's obligation was. There's been, over the last seven years, we've been butting heads and at the end of the day, it's the taxpayers, they're gonna be footing the bill. So we need to know before we get up from that table what the DCA is gonna do and what, you know, how it's gonna benefit the people of this city. That's my question. We need to have in writing from the DCA when we have these meetings. Thank you.
Um, um, Mr. Councilman Harrison, before we left that meeting, there was an outlined, uh, out, it was outlined into detail of what the DCA is putting forward. It was the administration's job to get that in writing once we left that meeting. Um, they, they, uh, had an obligation to get that before they even, uh, came forward today because I asked for the extension in the meeting for today to give them time to get what they needed from DCA and to also give us enough time to go through the, uh, budget books. So the administration should have gotten what they needed from DCA the day after we left the meeting because evidently it was in writing because it was in detail and nothing was left out. So it should have, it, it should have been in the hands of the business administrator before this meeting here tonight. So, um, any other council member like to ask, uh, Colin Cherry, any question?
Council President, I ask that because my colleagues have said there was a zero tax increase and now we're finding out that that's not true. So if we had it in writing before we left, the council members were there, you could have been able to produce that, to show with the, the outcome of the meeting. Yes.
Right, it's not a true, that is what was stated, but they had a list of detailed items that they presented to the administration and to council and, uh, um, the administration had an obligation to get that before this meeting, um, here tonight. At, at least that's what was said before we left the meeting, that they were gonna secure that, um, in writing before they came before us this evening.
Um, Madam President, if I may?
Yes, go right ahead, Mr. Cherry.
Um, to, to respond to your, um, question, Councilman Harrison, we, uh, as I stated, we absolutely agree. Um, the Director did state that the city of Trenton would be permitted to introduce, uh, with a tax rate of, of our choice, including zero. However, uh, as I stated during the presentation, to date, the only written instruction we have received since that meeting was to, a directive to introduce our budget with 85% of the prior year's transitional aid. Uh, prior, last year we received 8.25 million. So 85% of that is the 7 million we've introduced and they directed us to use 88% as our collection rate. So we have made those two changes and we are excited about the possibility of collaborating with council and working with the state to, uh, further develop their aid. And I am hopeful that it will in fact be, um, additional cash that we can use, uh, for our purposes, including reducing the tax rate. But that is, it would appear that the DCA, and I know that they are, uh, undergoing a change in directorship as we speak. Um, Director Walters was only the Director for the remainder of the week while we had that meeting. Um, so perhaps that has caused some delays, but all I can speak to is that what we have received in writing so far is the directive to use 88% as our collection rate and to use 85% of our prior year's allocation of transition aid, both of which we have done. Thank you.
Council President.
Yes, go right ahead, Councilwoman Vaughn.
Again, I just want to say on the record, I think I don't understand how we can even have this discussion. And, um, and I agree with what, uh, Councilman Harrison stated. I agree fully what, uh, Councilman Blakely stated. And, and I know what I heard and, and, and if you can't go to the meeting with the state and they cannot be, uh, uh, trusted and, uh, and hold to their agreement, then how can they expect us to come back and approve our budget? Cause that was the deal, right? That was the deal, that was the agreement, that if we did A, B, C, and D, they were gonna keep Trenton's taxes flat. And here we are, I, this is unacceptable, this is unacceptable. And I would want the mayor, endure yourself, endure Council President, Council Vice President, to get on the phone or the DCA and straighten this out. Cause I'm not going forward with this budget until I get those, get that commitment from the state as to what they're giving us. I heard 10 million transitional aid and 10 million statutory, uh, capital city aid. And, uh, that's that. And, and I'm, I, I, I'm not going forward with any more discussion. And I heard, here we are in COVID and all the other municipalities are getting, uh, uh, getting some relief because people are hurting financially. We cannot afford a tax increase, people aren't working. I mean, what are we, what are we doing here in Trenton? We gotta fight for our constituents. If this is the issue, this is just unacceptable. I just can't sit here and discuss this budget with a two, upward of almost 3% tax increase. After we left the meeting with the state, either, I don't know, I don't know what's going on here. Either the administration, uh, made some changes that they should not be making and blaming it and pointing a finger at the state? I don't know what has happened, but it's not clear. And we need to get some clarity before we move forward. And that's all I'm asking because I don't think our municipality, like all the other municipalities throughout the city of, uh, throughout the state of New Jersey, considering the pandemic and some of the, uh, issues that has impacted our economy, uh, unemployment, um, uh, uh, it, it's just unconscionable that Trenton is proposing a, a tax increase when the state told us that we're, they're gonna keep it flat. So, um, that's all I have to say. I, I just can't move forward, Council President and Council Vice President. I can't move forward with this until we get some clear clarity and, um, and, and hold the state to their commitment and their agreement. Thank you.
Well, let me be very clear to, uh, my, my council colleagues, the clarity comes from the council once this budget, budget is introduced to us. And, um, it is our job to hold it down to that 0%. And I believe that working with Mr. Cruz, the Mr. Cherry, that, um, we will be able to, uh, hold that, uh, hold those numbers down. But the overall picture is not just about, is not about just the bare bones of the budget. It's about what Councilwoman Caldwell-Wilson stated in her, uh, comment earlier about the mayor coming to, the, coming to the council with a plan for the city of Trenton. Um, for an example, you know, how does the mayor planned on moving forward to come out of the MOU? When the mayor first took office, he stated that the governor had, was gonna take us out of the MOU before he ever, uh, was sworn in. That was proven not to be true. And in the three years since then, we have not had a discussion about how to move forward with a plan to get from under that MOU. The MOU is important, moving forward, creating revenue for our, uh, within, uh, our borders, that's important and his vision is important. So those are things that should have been talked about in his State of the City address. And although we might talk about it with the individual department heads, that's not a cohesive plan. And so, yes, we should have a, a, a plan from the mayor, but we don't. And so this council can take it upon themselves to talk about the vision that we want for the city based on the fact that that's all we have to work with, is what we can do as a body. But we still can get those numbers down to zero, working with the administration, yes, we can. And, uh, I think that that's how we have to move forward. We have to be, uh, mindful that the, uh, DCA did outline to us what they were giving to us. And now that the administration doesn't have it in writing, now, um, tomorrow, I will move forward aggressively to make sure that I have it in, in, in my hands. Uh, and hopefully, uh, before Thursday, the outline that they gave us at the meeting. And that's all we want from them, is what they outlined at that meeting. We want it in writing, uh, uh, we want them to submit that to us in writing. If there's no more questions from the body, does any other, other council members have any questions for Mr. Cal, Mr. Cherry?
Um, Council President, it's Robin.
Wait, I'm, I'm, I'm asking for any other council members that might have a question that have not been heard. I, I understand that, but you had that opportunity and I'm trying to give everyone the same opportunity. If there's no one else that wanna speak, uh, to the, uh, presentation, uh, Councilwoman Vaughn, then you may speak.
Yeah, I'm, I just want to say, I don't see how we can make cuts if we don't know how much funding we're receiving from the state. So, um, I wouldn't want to, why should I, why should our residents have to suffer and, um, and endure cuts to their sur- and, um, and endure cuts to their services? I don't understand that. Here we are in the midst of COVID, how can we, we, our services have been cut back because of the pandemic, right? People aren't, there's cut back in staffing, um, I mean, hours of work, people are working from home, um. I mean, public works i- i- is stressed, the sanitation department is stressed, the, um, I mean, a lot of things are not able to get done. And here we are, gonna say that we're gonna go to work and start cutting per department. I don't feel that, I don't need to cut anything. Because they told us they were gonna be, our taxes were gonna be flat. So why are we cutting? So I don't get that and I'm just gonna wait until I hear back from DCA uh, uh, about this situation. So I, I, I'm just, I don't even know what to say here. This meeting is a complete, is so unproductive, it's a complete disaster. Because we had a meeting with the state and then no one really knows what, what, where we stand. So, uh, that's all I wanna say, Council President.
Um, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilwoman Vaughn. Um, um, I'll let Councilwoman Caldwell-Wilson and then I'll come back to you, Mr. Cherry. Uh, Councilwoman Caldwell-Wilson?
So, so I had just suggested, I thought that Mr. Cruz talked about those buckets where money was designated to certain departments. Um, those buckets of money that are coming in that they never had before should enable those departments to reduce their budgets. That's all I wanted to say.
All right, thank you. Uh, uh, Mr. Cherry?
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, yes, we, we are hopeful, uh, that as, as Councilwoman Caldwell-Wilson stated, that, uh, some of those buckets, once we get the detail from the state about exactly what they mean, will allow us to potentially shift some of our expenses. We hope that we receive it in cash. Uh, but I do wanna be clear that we are not currently, the mayor, the administration, we are not proposing any cuts in any services that are needed by the citizens of the city of Trenton. And as Madam President stated, the administration is excited to work with council and work with the state to, uh, make this happen in a way that is productive for the citizens of the city of Trenton and helps reduce their financial burden without reducing the very much needed services to our distressed community.
Thank you.
Council President?
Yes, go right ahead, Ms. Yes, yes, Council.
Um, what I want to say is, we, all of us, administration, council, we need to be holding the DCA accountable. That's what we need to do. That's how we're gonna look out for the public and their best interests. At the end of the day, we need to stop blaming each other, yelling at each other, whatever. But at the end of the day, we just need to sit down and realize, we gotta hold the DCA accountable. That's what we gotta do. Thank you.
Uh, um, Mr. Colin?
Yes, ma'am.
Can, can we move forward with the vote on the resolutions?
Yes, ma'am. Actually, we have Resolution twenty-one dash zero zero five, a resolution to approve the introduction to the fiscal year 2021 budget. Be resolved by all city councils of Trenton County. Of the full authorized membership of this governing body for the introduced 2021 fiscal year budget. Do I have a motion to introduce?
So move.
A motion by Council Vice President Caldwell-Wilson. Do I have a second? I have a second by Mr. Blakely. I'll not call the roll. Mr. Blakely?
Yes.
Council Vice President Caldwell-Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Harrison?
Yes.
Mr. Michelle?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
I'm staying.
Council President McBride?
Yes.
Budget is adopted by a full, by a majority of the full authorized membership and the introduction passes. Next on the agenda, we have docket review. Council President, would you like to proceed to docket review?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am. Uh, we will have, uh, the June fourth, twenty twenty minutes already went out to council. Uh, I am working on the June eighteenth final edits, those will go out tomorrow morning to council. We have ten Yes, ma'am, I'm sorry.
Excuse me, I apologize for interrupting you.
No worries.
Can you let the, can you let the public know that, um, now that the, uh, budget has been introduced to the council, that there are going to be, um, um, public meetings? Would you let the public know that now?
Um, ladies and gentlemen, the council has set up a series of hearings uh, on February third, February eighth, February tenth, February seventeenth, February twenty-second, February twenty-fourth. I've asked Mr. Paul Harris to post those on the website. There will be a public meeting link on the website. Those meetings will begin at five thirty. They, they will also list the individual department budget hearings that will be occurring on those dates. Additionally, if you would like a copy of the budget, please contact my office. We do have a pub, copy for public inspection. However, considering COVID nineteen, I do have a PDF copy available and I'd be happy to provide or send that to anybody who requests it. Uh, once again, those budget hearings should be listed on the city of Trenton website in, in, in the next day or two. Uh, the budget hearings begin on February third. They will be every Monday and Wednesday with the exception of February fifteenth uh, through February twenty-fourth. Uh, I will also be posting a, uh, one more last item. I will also, in case you do not have access, uh, to email, I will be posting a copy of the fiscal year twenty-one PDF budget on the Ecode three sixty website where we house our public documents. Thank you very much. Council President, would you like me to proceed?
Yes, thank you.
Uh, going back into the docket, we will have two sets of minutes for approval. You will have the final edit of the June eighteenth minutes tomorrow morning. There are ten communications and petitions in the clerk's office. The clerk's office will also present a report of revenue forty-five thousand three hundred and eighty-three dollars and forty-five cents. We will have a second hearing, second reading and public hearing for twenty-six zero, which is an ordinance establishing the position of a state of council and amending Article One, City Council and City Clerk, Article Six, Department of Law and Chapter Two Administration, Chapter A three sixteen Rules of Procedure and the appendix of the Code of City of Trenton. Now, move on to the resolutions from the Department of Administration. President Wright?
Yes.
Yes. I have questions about, uh, the, uh, legislative council legislation.
Go right ahead.
Thank you. So, uh, do we have someone from the law department here?
Yeah, we have three people here. How are you doing, Councilmember?
Uh, I'm good, uh, Mr. Bridges. Can you, uh, from my understanding, uh, this, uh, ordinance is illegal. It, it's not proper. And it's important, I think, that we adhere to the rules. So can you explain again, uh, the improper status of, or the legality of this legislative council? Because it's my understanding that we, our legislative council is the law department. That's my understanding, that the law department in this city represents both the mayor and city council. So please explain to me and other folks if what I'm saying is incorrect or what I'm saying, if what I am saying is correct.
Yeah, this is, this is the gift that keeps on giving, quite frankly. We've, we've addressed this when I was outside council. I know the prior law directors have dealt with this. Um, the, I believe that the Faulkner Act is very clear that the law department is council for council. I do appreciate council's desire and wish and need, um, for what they're attempting to ask. But, um, you know, I, I have expressed my belief that I don't think it's proper. Um, that said, the resolution will go forward if we're willing to. And, and to the extent that it does go through, it'll be something that'll be addressed in normal course and the already ongoing litigation. So, uh, uh, and from, from my standpoint, it is not proper. It is in contravention of the Faulkner Act. But, um, you know, that's a decision for council to make. They've been, they've been given that information several times. Um, so we'll let the chips fall where they may. You're muted, you're muted, Mr. Blakely, Councilman Blakely.
So, so let me ask the follow-up question. Will the mayor, will the administration sue city council if the council approves this, uh, ordinance?
Um, I don't know that answer at this time.
Okay, all right, thank you. But there, it's a possibility that this will be, um, an item that is subject to litigation.
Yep.
Okay, so just to be clear, I, I'm against this, uh, ordinance. I believe that it is inappropriate. It is clearly illegal. It is clearly against the Faulkner Act. And I think that we should not purposely break the law by, by this, um, by supporting this ordinance. And so I think it's inappropriate and I'm gonna be voting no against it. Thank you.
Let me also, if I may, um, s- suggest, and again, I defer or hardly to council and, and, uh, their decision to move forward or not with this, um, proposed resolution. You know, I always think it's worth a one way to take that and think the in-depth conversation with council and law department can go a long way. Maybe there's a way that we can assign someone in the law department to be the liaison, to be, uh, you know, the, the point person for council. I, I, I think it's worth the conversation. I don't hold out much faith that, that there will be a conversation, but I remain available to have that conversation to see if there's a way that we can, uh, have an agreement that everybody, everybody happy. Farewell speech, but I have an apple as well.
Council President?
Uh, Mr. Blakely, can you speak together to the guys who are muted?
Yes, um, if everyone else will mute themselves, Councilwoman Caldwell-Wilson?
Yes, um, Mr. Bridges, um, we're currently in litigation because the mayor sued council. So wouldn't this issue be handled at that litigation? This would not be an additional lawsuit?
That's a very good possibility, Councilwoman Caldwell-Wilson. Um, that, that, that is a very good possibility. Again, I would have to, um, uh, take a look at that, uh, make an evaluation as to whether or not it's part and parcel of the current ongoing litigation. If I had my druthers, obviously I would want that to be the case because we would not have to have a separate matter. So that, that very likely will be the case, Councilwoman Caldwell-Wilson.
Thank you very much.
Counsel, um, Mr. Bridges? Council President? Um, are, are you familiar with this ordinance, uh, that it exists in other municipalities with the mayor, uh, seven council member, uh, charter? Are you familiar with municipalities that ha, that have this actual ordinance in place?
Uh, I, Mr., uh, the, Mr. Colin was kind enough to forward that to me. I am aware that I did take a look at it and, and, um, I, I saw it. I understand it's in place with respect to the legality of that. Again, that, that I, 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 I cannot speak to that right now. In my opinion, having reviewed the Faulkner Act, having reviewed this issue several times before, I don't think it's proper. But, yeah, again, I, I don't really ha- have a, um, a, a fight per se. I understand council's need, but at the same time, I understand the need to adhere to the Faulkner Act. Therefore, um, you know, once this is passed or, or whatever the case may be, we'll do an evaluation. I'll take a deeper dive into that, um, into that ordinance. And, and quite frankly, um, you know, hopefully speak with council, make a determination, uh, uh, obviously as well as the mayor and administration, the best way to resolve this issue. And if there is, you know, if there is an agreement to disagree, um, there is that ongoing litigation and, um, the judge can make the determination of the interpretation of the Faulkner Act and this sp- specific provision that states that the law department is council for city council.
All right, so, um, Mr. Bridges, is it not true that when there is a conflict, such as the conflict that we've had in the past, that, and we have to continuously go outside of the law department to seek counsel? Wouldn't it best serve the, this particular council to have their own attorney?
Uh, whether or not it's best served and, and consistent with the Faulkner Act, I, I think are two different things. And wi- with respect to if there is a conflict, just like any other, uh, matter, if there is a conflict, that would, that would go to outside council as, as part of the conflict council. But, um, uh, I, I do understand, um, your motivation and your desire for this. Again, I think it would be beneficial for all of us to sit down and have a discussion with respect to this and see if there's a way that we can resolve.
Mr. Colin, what in the world just occurred?
I think Mr. Bridges had a technical failure. I'm not sure if it was on his end.
I didn't, I didn't have a technical or anything. I just started getting that echo again, um.
Yeah, it's, it's a team's issue. I think it's the bandwidth. I'm sorry about that. I don't think there's a whole lot we can do about it. Uh, if you do start here, start hearing that echo, just mute yourself real quick and unmute yourself. That should solve.
Gotcha, thank you. A- a- and, um, Council President, again, to, to your point, if there is a conflict, as potentially is the case with this specific issue, to be completely transparent, um, it, this would be something that you would have your, your own council to defend your position and your desire to, to pass this ordinance. And administration on their end would have their own attorney to, to, uh, uh, take up the, of the mantle on their behalf. This is something where I, I would, my role would be limited into giving you, uh, my legal advice, my legal opinion coming from the law department. And, and at that point in time, if you guys were to say, hey, we're gonna go forward with this and the administration had a problem with it, it'll be something, again, that will be addressed in the courts and let the chips fall where they may.
Thank you. Mr. Colin, you may continue with the vote.
Yes, ma'am. It's, uh, it's actually not the vote. We're just going through the rest of the agenda. Uh, we're gonna get into the resolutions now from the Department of Administration, Adam Cruz. We already heard Resolution twenty-one zero zero five, which is approved introducing the budget. Next, we have Resolution twenty-one dash zero zero seven, a resolution authorizing a six-month extension order to Mark GLLA to continue to provide telephone cable and computer cabling installation and repair of central telephone lines and support Cisco voiceover telephone system in amount not to exceed fifty thousand dollars through bid two thousand sixteen dash eighty-two. Floor is open. Anybody wish to be heard in this matter? Consent agenda man?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am. Next, we have Resolution twenty-one dash zero zero six. And this is from the Department of Law from Wesley Bridges, Acting Director. Next, we have Resolution twenty-one dash zero zero six, a resolution authorizing the award of a contract with the Law Office of Malley Givens, PC to provide professional legal services in regards to special counsel through fair and open process in accordance with NJSA nineteen colon forty-four cap A dash twenty point five at second in amount not to exceed twenty-five thousand dollars through RFP twenty twenty dash twenty.
Uh, Council President?
Yes, go right ahead.
Uh, can, can we roll call this, please? I believe this is the attorney that currently serves as the representative for the F, for the city's ethics board, correct, Mr. Um, Bridges?
Correct.
So why are we, okay, oh, okay, so, um, I guess his contract is being expanded or, 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 I mean, I thought he already had a contract.
Uh, this, as I read this, this was a resolution that was put, put together prior to me assuming the role of acting director. I did review it and my reading of it is authorizing the award of it. Doesn't, it does not reflect an amendment or a change to it, to it authorizing the award through a, um, fair and open process. So I do not believe that they're amending their current contract. I believe that they are doing it fresh for, um, a, a new contract.
So how, so their current contract has expired?
Yes.
Oh, okay. But, you know, definitely, um, um, uh, roll call this one.
Mr. Bridges?
Yes, Council President.
Yes, I would like to know how many, um, how many other cases that this law firm worked on for the city? Because I, I'm trying to find out whether or not they're conflicted here. Because, um, before, they were listed as having done work for the city as individuals for certain cases. And now they're assigned to the ethics, uh, board. I, I just wanna make sure they're not conflicted out. And so if I could get that information sent over to Mr. Colin, uh, before Thursday?
I will gather that for you, Council President.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Next, we are ready to proceed.
And can I just ask one more question about this particular wa, uh, uh, resolution? With the Malley Givens Law Firm, Council President?
Go right ahead.
Uh, uh, Acting Director Bridges?
Uh-huh.
Um, can I ask, uh, how did this, who, who is introducing this, uh, Stephen Schlescher or Dor Sherwin? Uh, Steven Schlescher or Dore Sherwin Brown? Uh, who, who's introducing this ordinance? I mean, this resolution?
Uh, yeah, I'm, I'm, I, I believe it's Mr., uh, I believe it's the someone from the ethics part, Mr. Schlescher. I, I don't have confirmation on that, but I will get that to you before Thursday as well. But that's my understanding.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
You may continue.
Yes, ma'am. Uh, next we have from the Department of Police, Sheila Colley, Director, Resolution 21-008, a resolution authorizing contract to Gauls LLC for the purchase of 40 bulletproof vests for the City of Trenton Department of Police through New Jersey State Contract Number T-0106, 17DPP 00046 in an amount not to exceed $55,165.40. Any questions?
You may, uh, add it to the consent agenda.
Yes, ma'am. Next, we have Resolutions from the Department of Fire, Krista Mazear, Acting Director. Resolution 20-735, a resolution accepting a bid and awarding a contract to Kovach Mobile Equipment Corporation.
I'm, I'm sorry to interrupt you, President McBryant. Uh, can I have the floor for a second?
Um, you need to, uh, let him continue reading the resolution into record before, uh, uh, you have.
Got a problem, man. Thank you.
Resolution accepting bid and awarding contract to Kovach Mobile Equipment Corporation, KEM Fire Apparatus, for the purchase and delivery of unpublished items and parts for a custom pumper engine three in an amount not to exceed $171,080.46 through bid 2020-70.
Uh, this is for the police director?
Um, Director Coley?
She is still here, Director Coley, if you, you are still muted.
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, uh, Director Coley, wh- what is the status of the, um, of the towing contract or the towing, um, updated rules? Will that be given to, uh, council? I know that, um, I reached out to you for a meeting and I would like to meet with you to discuss more about the towing regulations. Is that going to be done by ordinance?
Um, yes, sir. It, it's going to be done the same way as it is every year. Uh, right now, we're in the process of accepting the, um, you know, each, each company has to submit that they're interested in it and we've already accepted those, um, those letters of intent and we've compiled the package and we forwarded, um, over to City Hall. So we're, that, that's the stage that we're at, at this point. I know that there were some changes that you wanted to make, um, to the ordinance, but I think, um, the changes that you were looking to make were, hello?
I'm listening.
Oh, no, my, my phone just completely blanked, so I thought maybe I lost you. Um, so I think, um, we, you and I could definitely meet in reference to that. We could not meet before because I was out sick. Um, but, um, yeah, so we can schedule that and definitely meet on the, uh, changes that you want to make and the ones that are within my control that we can make, that I'm willing to do that and anything else I send to the law department.
Okay, yes, this is a very important, uh, important to me. You know, I get calls all the time about, uh, bad behavior from some of the towing, um, companies in town and I want to make sure that we have, uh, consumer protections for, uh, you know, to stop some of the bad actors in, uh, the towing space. And so, uh, I would really like to set up that meeting. I know we had a meeting last week, um, that was canceled, but I'd really like to have a meeting, um, before it's brought before council so that we can ensure, uh, that our citizens have, you know, uh, you know, their rights and that, you know, we're doing everything that we can to protect them from being exploited. And so please, I, I'll reach out again and I look forward, uh, to meeting with you to, uh, suggest some changes and see what the best practices are on this issue. Thank you very much.
Council President, would you like me to continue with the docket?
Yes, please.
Okay, once again, Resolution 20-735, a resolution accepting a bid and awarding contract to Kovach Mobile Equipment Corporation, Kem Fire Apparatus for the purchase and delivery of unpublished items and parts for a custom pumper engine three in an amount not to exceed $171,080.46 through bid 2020-70. The floor is open. Ma'am, would you like me to put it on the consent agenda?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am. Next, we have Resolution 21-009, a resolution authorizing contract to Kovach Mobile Equipment Corporation, DBA KME Fire Apparatus for the purchase of one custom engine three for the fire department and emergency services through New Jersey State Contract Number G-803583151 in an amount not to exceed $468,919.54.
Uh, Council President?
Yes.
Um, is Mr. Mazear available?
Yes, I am.
Hi, good evening, Mr. Mazear. Um, I, I understand that is through the estate contract, so I know you're getting the best, best price here. So four, six, four hundred and sixty-eight thousand is a half a million dollars. Can you describe exactly what this service is for?
Yes, so that would be replacing engine three, which is a 24-year-old, uh, pumper. And we're NFPA standards is what we're trying to comply with, suggests that you, uh, remove from service frontline apparatus after 15 years. So as you can see, this, this apparatus is 24 years old and by time the contracts are signed and it's approved, it'll actually be 26 years old, which is actually a year past the, uh, the statute to even have them as a reserve apparatus.
Okay. And the reason why I, I asked, because since we were on the budget and, uh, and I kind of peruse, uh, through the departments over the weekend, looking at, you know, salary and wages and operating expenses, and it seems to me, and your department was one of the ones that I highlighted were concerned, is because I'm just astounded, it's not just your department, but across all the departments in the city, I see the same, um, repetitive, uh, 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 the repetitive, uh, high salary and wages line item. And so much is allocated to salary, the right wages and as little investments in, you know, operating expenses and, and, uh, resources, um, and investment in our, in, in our services, in our service areas. So, I mean, your budget as far as salary and wages are just, is just, I don't know if that comprises of overtime or what, but then you come up with these, um, I, I, I mean, I, I'm just going to be looking at your budget very closely, sir. Um, because I think that your department is one of the ones that need to be, uh, addressed and, and, and experience some serious cutting. So, thank you.
You're welcome.
Council President, how would you like to list this item?
You make, um, consent agenda.
Yes, ma'am. Next, we have Resolution from the Department of Finance, Resolution 21-010, a resolution authorizing the City of Trenton to cancel a erroneous TWW tax sale certificates.
We don't have 21-009?
We just did that one, ma'am. That was the second, uh, fire engine one and we added that to the consent.
Oh, okay, because I thought that, okay, my.
Yeah, they, they were actually both related to engine three, 20-735 and then 21-009.
So, um, can I just, um, Council President, could I just, uh, can we roll call this one? Uh, 21, Resolution 21-0110, and could, uh, Mr. Cruz speak to this, please? Um, I mean, you know, I get a lot of calls from the residents around, you know, uh, you know, uh, that poor data, for lack, lack of a better term, poor data at City Hall, right? And, and their accounts being, um, rather than paying their taxes or trying to, uh, or, um, or tax sales or foreclosures or pushing their taxes. I mean, they're, uh, applying tax liens and it seems to be a lot of errors going on. And there's no quality around, uh, managing our residents' accounts and assets, right? Primarily your home and, and et cetera. So what are you doing, uh, Mr. Cruz, about better servicing our, our citizens? Um, how are we having erroneous, what, what is a erroneous tax sale certificate? Does that mean that somebody's, um, home, uh, had a lien on it that shouldn't have been there or what? Like, what does that mean?
So if, if you look in the body of the resolution, uh, Councilwoman, it, it says that the, um, that the deeds were delivered to the City of Trenton after 316 and 20, uh, 31620, making the lien sold, uh, invalid. And, uh, as a result, the lien holder, David Bailey, is entitled to a refund, um, on, on his investment. So it, it's, it has to do with the, with the timeframe that these deeds were submitted to finance. And, 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 and to follow up on customer service related, uh, concerns, um, we try to identify when people, uh, uh, do make complaints, we try to identify what the issue is and Constance and Janet work together on coming up with a solution. And, uh, I, 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 I know that there has been, uh, on a couple of occasions, a couple of things have come up my way and then we address them. And, uh, you know, we, we, we try to, to set policies to ensure that, you know, situations like that don't, don't reoccur. But for something like this, you know, with, uh, somebody having a lien, um, and not providing it on time, you know, will create something like this. Uh, and it's not, it's not, uh, you know, unfortunately, it was not the fault of the person who made the investment, but somebody who submitted this, uh, late.
Mm-hmm, yes. Because I guess, um, coming, coming out of COVID or, you know, it seems like every day the, um, situation changes, um, with this pandemic, uh, it's definitely very fluid. But, um, but, you know, a lot of, I guess you're going to get a lot of volume sooner or later around, you know, foreclosures and tax liens and et cetera, um, as, as, uh, we roll into, as we get into the second quarter, because I, I, I'm sure the governor and, 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 uh, the president, the newly-elect president is going to start opening things up and people are going to be accountable for, um, taking good on their modifications and, and their mortgage modifications and things like that. And, um, I just hope that the City of Trenton is, uh, is, is helping our citizens get through those, you know, uh, those transactions and, and, and in a, in a customer-friendly way. Thank you.
Uh, thank you. And, and for 21-011, the next one coming up, that one's actually, it's a court ruling where the person went to a tax appeal court and they were, um, and they were awarded a, um, uh, the, the difference, uh, by a judge. So this, uh, 21-011 is a pretty much, uh, no fault of anyone, it was just a court decision.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That could be, uh, added to the consent agenda unless, uh, yes, 20, 21-010. Did you want to roll call that, Councilwoman Vaughn?
Uh, yes, 2010 I do. Oh, no, 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 uh, no, no, you could put that, he explained it. Um, he, no, no, that could go consent agenda.
Next, we have 20, Resolution 21-011, a resolution authorizing the City of Trenton to issue a refund totaling $538.07 as a result of New Jersey Tax Court judgment. For, yes, ma'am. Uh, as previously noted, Resolutions 21-012 and 21-013 were adopted by votes of six to zero to with one extension. Um, we now move on to Resolution 21-014. This is from the Department of Housing and Economic Development, Benjamin Delisle, Director. 21-014, a resolution authorizing the execution of a grant advance agreement in the amount of $750,000 between the City of Trenton, New Jersey and Community Loan Fund of New Jersey Inc., doing business as New Jersey Community Capital for Phase One of the East Trenton Library Community Center Rehabilitation Project. Floor is open.
Uh, oh, yeah, uh, can we roll call that one?
Any other questions?
Um, yes, could I ask a question for, for Ben Delisle on that one?
Yeah, yes, Councilwoman, I'm here.
Okay, how are we doing over there in the East Trenton Library Rehabilitation Project? Because we've been getting a lot of money to that project and, um, and the community, again, I know a lot of folks don't agree, but the community, some folks in the community are not happy with the progress over there. So, I mean, when do we expect to build out to complete over there?
Councilwoman, i- if I could, I'd like to have someone from the East Trenton Collaborative give a, a brief update or an overview of, of the project, if that's okay?
Yes, absolutely.
I believe Ms. Snyder, um, from the Collaborative, she's a community organizer and, uh, I believe she's going to want to speak to the project.
Yes, Ben Delisle, good evening, council. Um, thank you for having me here. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Your name in your organization.
Okay, my name is Sherrell Snyder. I'm a resident here in Trenton and I work with the East Trenton Collaborative.
Okay, go ahead. So, I mean.
Ms. Vaughn, can I make a statement, please, about the?
Yes, sure.
Okay, I just want you to know that the former East Trenton Collaborative Library, located at 701 North Trenton Avenue, I mean, North Clinton, excuse me, is an historic place and beloved, and a beloved community facility. The structure actively served the community as a branch library for nearly eight decades until it was abruptly shut down due to the city budget crisis in 2009. Okay, ETC, the East Trenton Collaborative, is currently working alongside residents, New Jersey Community Capital and the City of Trenton to restore its historic structure as a community center that focuses on education, business, and job enhancement activities and other community programming. In 2020, New Jersey Community Capital received a grant from the NJ Historic Trust to renovate the structure and restore it to use as the East Trenton Library Community Center in partnership with the City of Trenton. The building has a tremendous history from its original use starting in 1796 as the home of the son of Revolutionary War General Philamon Dickinson.
Miss, 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 Miss Snyder?
Yes, Madam President.
You need to answer, uh, the Councilwoman's question. Um, we did not have any slots for presentation. Please, uh, answer the Councilwoman's, uh, question.
When, yes, when do you, when do you expect to complete the build out of the life, of the building?
Okay.
It's been working on for quite, where's the plan? Because I, you know, I see, I seen the plan when I first came on to council.
Mm-hmm.
That was about two years ago. And I keep seeing grants being applied to this, uh, project.
Okay, there's two phases.
When is it going to be done?
There are two phases. And may I, Councilwoman Vaughn, give you to my director that's on this progress? Um, her name is Diane Sterna?
No, no, no.
No, okay.
We need you to answer these questions or.
I would like to hear from Ms. Snyder.
Um, I would like to have heard Mr. Delisle explain to the Councilwoman because any time his department goes out and allocate money, he should have the full knowledge of everything that is taking place under that money that he's distributing and the fact that he doesn't is a problem. Now, Mrs. Snyder, if you can answer, Mr.
Yes, Madam President.
If you can answer the Councilwoman's question, I'd appreciate it.
Yes, Madam President. All right, so we're going to have two phases. The first phase it is, is the renovation, um, is going to cover the exterior renovations, um, system upgrades, interior renovations to the first floor and additions of two, um, accessible bathrooms. On the second phase, we'll focus on remodeling the second floor. Um, after construction, the facility will be operated by the city, which owns the building, with programming by ETC and others. Phase one construction is expected to begin in the spring or summer of this year, 2021.
Okay, and completion?
The completion, um, I'm not sure, but I don't think it'd be no longer than 2022.
Well, I need to know when, if you have a plan, you should know when the project is going to complete, because that's the way, that is. Because that's the way, that is the way you know how much money you're going to be using. I mean, how do you, I mean, Mr. Delisle, can you help out?
Well, first, Councilwoman, I'd just like to state that this, the city's not previously given money for this project. This is the first time that we've done this for this particular project. We, the NJCC received a grant of $750,000 from the trust, and this funding agreement is we are matching that. The money was provided last year from transitional aid. It was provided by DCA specifically for this purpose. But we have not provided any funds to this project to date. So this is the first time that we're doing this. I'd be happy to come back to council when we have the project scheduled. They haven't, because the funding agreement is just being put into place. They haven't hired contractors. They haven't put it out to bid yet. So I'd be happy to come back to council when we have a full picture of the project, when we have a contractor on board in their schedule.
Yeah, I would, so when do you anticipate getting a schedule from New Jersey Community Capital?
I think we could get a schedule from them, a preliminary schedule, within a week's time.
Okay. And please don't, you don't have to wait until the next council meeting to send the clerk this schedule. You can send it to us as soon as you get it. I'd much appreciate it. And another question is, so is this going to be a library? Is it going to be aligned to the Mercer County Branch Library System?
No, I don't, I believe that the intent is that this would be held as a community center, or not recreation, but a community center. Those details, operated, and what other activities in there have yet to be fully worked out.
So is it not going to be a library with volumes?
That, that is not my understanding. But again, I think that's...
I don't understand why it's not going to be a library with books. Could anybody, is Ms. Snyder available? Like, I don't understand. Because DCA also, in this current fiscal year 21 budget, it mentioned, it shares with us that Ward is getting $350,000 to invest in a library.
Councilwoman Vaughn, it will have library, I mean, books, excuse me. It will contain books, reading tablets, flexible work areas, extensive computer and internet connectivity, designed for job search, research, and range of training and business support activities.
Okay, with $750,000, okay. $750,000, although it's a big chunk of change, but that is nowhere near enough to build out a library.
It's matching funds, Councilwoman.
But, no, they said this is matching funds to what? What was the other matching? How much is the overall cost of the project?
The matching front, the City of Trenton is matching the historical funds that the East Trenton Collaborative have already received, or are going to receive.
Okay. And I'm just curious, how much is the project is going to cost then, for the library?
Councilwoman, could I address you?
Yes, of course.
Thank you. So the library, the project is going to be done in two phases. As Sherelle mentioned, Phase 1 is mainly the first floor, which will be the floor that will be initially open to the public for, and it will have books and computers, and also areas for training room, for training, and other educational programming. The main library, public library for the City of Trenton, did not want to reopen any of the branch libraries. So the option that was open to the community was to reopen it as a community center that would have similar functions to a library, but also would do additional programming for the community. The programming is going to be put together in partnership between the East Trenton Collaborative, New Jersey Community Capital, other nonprofit partners in the community, and the City of Trenton. Hopefully, some of the different departments will host programming that will happen out in the community. The first phase of the project is supposed to start, as Sherelle mentioned, in the spring. And it should be done by the end of this year or early next year, depending on how long construction takes. That phase is going to cost like $1.8 million, just under $1.8 million. So $750,000 of that comes from the trust. $750,000 is a match from the City of Trenton, and the source of that money is the state. And then we're applying to state government for another $280,000, which we're hoping to hear from shortly. That is the biggest part of the renovation, and it includes the interior systems and the facade and the first, you know, the HVAC and the electrical system and all that. It also includes a, we have to have an archaeological study in order to get the trust funds, because they want to make sure that we're not going to, that nothing is going to be damn like. Phase 2 is for the second floor primarily, and that's a floor that had a children's library. But it's, it can be a discreet use from the first floor, and there's the likelihood that it'll be redeveloped and then rented out to a community organization, or even a, you know, even like a company that has compatible services that they provide, compatible with the educational and other things that will be happening on the first floor, to try to generate some rental income to help cover the cost of operating the building. The building will, is still going to be owned by the city, and so the programming, it'll be a partnership. So it's not going to be, we checked to see if it was eligible for the library bond that you mentioned, and it's not, because it's not going to be run exactly as a library. So we've had to raise money from other sources. It's taken a long time to raise the money, and that's why we're only now bringing the actual agreements to the council, because we had to go through the whole process with the historic trust. They awarded the money last Janu, where they, the legislature approved the money last January, but it took the entire year to get it under contract, partly because of COVID and partly because there's a lot of paperwork that has to be done. So we haven't received, we haven't gotten a single penny yet for the work. It's all been planning work so far and putting the pieces together, so...
Yeah, and that's my concern, because, as you said, it is a historic landmark. And one thing I, I mean, I'm just not really, you know, of course, I'm the West Ward representative, but I speak to a lot of folks in East Trenton, and their concern is that that building should be used for a library. So if we're going to build a library in all the wards, and why, why would we use this building for a community center? When it's time to build a library with, you know, state-of-the-art references, ebooks, e-audio, like the state library is on that system, I believe it links into the county system, right? So where would the East Trenton Library go? You know, I had a conversation with Council President, very briefly, about the allocation DCA, the New Jersey Department of Community Affairs, is making across all four wards to build out a library, right? So this building should be used for a library, but I guess, you know, I don't get this community center thing, but, you know, that's just my take and some of the residents in that neighborhood. And they're not really happy with the movement, and perhaps if they can see the plan, and once the plan starts getting executed, and things start, folks start seeing a realization of what it is you all are trying to build. Because to use that historic building for any other, I don't know, any other type of programming other than a library, I don't get that. And I don't know how that came about, but, you know, I think it's a disservice to the City of Trenton and to that building. It should be a library. Thank you. All right, but Mr. Delisle, but give me that plan, please.
Could I just say one more thing?
Yeah, sure, absolutely.
Okay. So the, the way the plan is being developed is very library-like, and it could be converted very easily back to a library, should the city ever desire to do that. The city's going to maintain ownership. There's going to be the same floor layout in terms of the big room where the books were, and there's going to be books there. There's also going to be little, what do you call the little library kiosk things, where people do their reading and their studying, and it's going to be wired for internet so people can bring their laptops, and then there's going to be some computers that people in the community can use that may not have computers to do job searches. All of the things that you could do in a library, you'll be able to do in this building. And then there'll be some additional things that you can, that, some programming that might or might not occur in other libraries. But as we looked at the options, making, calling it a library right now was not an option, but making it have the services that a library has is an option, and that is a large part of what we're pursuing. There's also a number of residents from the community that are on this call tonight, and they would like to speak in the, in the public session toward the end of the meeting. So you'll hear from some of them a little later. Thank you.
I just want to say one last thing, Council President, is that if it's going to be a library, and considering where libraries, where state-of-the-art libraries are today, if Trenton is going to go down building libraries in our city, then we need to make them state-of-the-art, and we need to include, we should follow the model that the state of New Jersey has with their state library, because all volumes now are being transferred to ebooks and e-audio. So, and I think Ben Delisle and your, I'm sorry, I didn't get her name, who just spoke, if you're the project manager or program manager on this project, then you should definitely make sure that that is on the table, that any type of library we're building in the City of Trenton that should have, should be state-of-the-art, right? And I don't know what type of books you're having, if they're not going to be ebooks or e-audio, right? I don't know what type of system you're going to be on, but I would like to see the plan.
Mr. Delisle, if you could get the Councilwoman the plan from Mrs. Snyder, I'd appreciate it. Mr. Collin, can you continue, please?
Yes, ma'am. Next, we have Resolution 21-015, a resolution awarding a contract through a fair amount of process in accordance with NJASA 19:44-H20.4 at SEC, to multiple vendors for demolition consultants for professional engineering and construction administration services for the Community Development Block Grant Program Neighborhood Redevelopment and Revitalization Pilot NRRP Program and other funded work in an amount not to exceed $600,000 through RFP 2020-46 Ingenuity Infrastructure, Gallagher Basset Technical Services, French and Perello Associates, and Mazer Consulting PA.
Mr. Collin, I would like this roll called.
Yes, ma'am. So...
And I would also like to have a meeting with Mr. Cruz and Mr. Delisle, because they keep shelling out that CBGG grant funding, and to who they want to shell it out to, but the federal government has told us more than once that we could open up libraries throughout this city. And now that the state is offering up $350,000 per ward, I definitely want to go into a conversation with Mr. Delisle before he shell out any more of that CBGG grant funding, because we need a library in other wards, South Ward, the East Ward, and the West Ward. So I need a serious conversation with him. He's shelling out a lot of money, and the council gets to vote on it, but don't get to make a decision where and when that money, and how that money should be shelled out. So I think I want to roll call on this. I will be voting no. And till they produce to me, to Mr. Delisle, and I have a conversation along with the business administrator and the council vice chair.
President McBride?
President...
Go right ahead, Councilman Blakely.
Thank you. And if possible, I'd like to be involved in that meeting. You know, the libraries are very, very important to me. I grew up attending the Hermitage Branch Library on Hermitage Avenue, and I would not be in graduate school, I would not be who I am if I did not have access to that facility. The fact that those facilities have been closed in all of the wards is an outrage, particularly when, you know, the state spends millions, top of millions, on, you know, correctional facilities. When we have opened, closed libraries, it's just completely outrageous. And I think that this is why it's important to have a plan. Because if the administration has the opportunity to use state funds combined with community development block grants, then there should be a plan to reopen. It is a sad, sad testament that those facilities are closed. And if you're telling us that there's an opportunity to keep these open, listen, as much as...
Just a point of information, this is actually on Resolution 21-015. This is for the destruction of vacant and abandoned properties and not for the library, sir.
Okay, I'm sorry about that.
My apologies, sir.
You can actually, I would like to, President McBride, if, you know, be involved in that, because I just think it's something that we need to talk about, and I think that's something we need to do. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Council President, could I speak to this resolution for some clarity?
Yes, you can, Mr. Delisle.
Thank you, Council President. The CBGG funds specific to this resolution are for demolition. If you recall, the city in years past had issues with how it had spent CBGG money, and we were able to swap, use the demolition funds provided by the state and get a bit of a redo-over on those funds. So we had done that with voluntary grant reduction and using CB, those funds replaced CBGG funds. So these particular funds can only be used for the demolition activities. And a portion of this will be, of this work we use for CBG, will be paid for, excuse me, with CBGG, and a portion with the development, the demolition funds provided by the state. So I think we can certainly look towards future allocations. We'll be coming up soon for the next year for CBG funds that, I think the discussion of libraries makes a lot of sense. But for these particular funds, these allocations, that would not be a possibility. And you also see that we, I know it is $600,000, but that is spread amongst four different engineering firms. The idea is to get multiple firms working in different parts of the city on different projects simultaneously to really address the blighted buildings that we have throughout the city. And I know that's been an important initiative for the council to address the abandoned buildings that need to be torn down. And this is an effort to expedite that as much as possible.
So, Council President?
Yes, Councilwoman Vaughn?
So this $600,000 is separated from the $11.5 million received from the state?
No, it'll be funded out of that pot of money. So this is for, you know, professionals to help us in that effort. The properties need to be...
But I thought the $11.5 million, that, that, how, I mean, how could, I mean, I didn't think that was CBGG grant money.
It is, it is, it is not. The $11.5 is not CBGG money. We will be paying for this work with some with CBGG money and some with the, out of that $11.5.
Okay, but you, where, how much do we have left from the $11.5? Because you have drawn down on that, right? You spent some of it already, demology and a couple of buildings, right?
Yes, yes, we have. I mean, we use $11.5 just so that we're talking about the same pot of money.
How much is left of the $11.5?
I'd say approximately $10 million.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, and this was, and if you recall, back in March, we, I brought to council, and council adopted the Strategic Demolition Plan. we, I brought to council, and council adopted the Strategic Demolition Plan. And that was contemplated in the plan that we would be hiring professionals to help evaluate properties and prepare bidding specifications and help with some oversight during demolition activities.
Thank you. Roll call, roll call, Mr. Collin.
Yes, ma'am.
We may continue.
Next, we have Resolution 21-016, a resolution authorizing the acceptance of online auction successful bids and authorizing the sale of city-owned properties.
Council President?
Yes, Councilwoman Vaughn.
So, Resolution authorizing the acceptance of online auction successful bids and authorizing the sale of city-owned properties. So, Mr. Delisle?
Yes?
So I have received a lot of feedback, and I'm sure you have as well, from the residents about the online auction.
Yes.
And a lot of folks said that they were not able to get in. Is that true?
Well, that would be news to me. You know, it was very successful, the auction. We had, there was over 372 people that were actually registered, and 284 individuals actually participated in the auction and cast bids. There were over 1,500 bids cast during the day. And on average, there were 31.
And you didn't hear any feedback as far as people not being able to get on, or?
I mean, there were some issues, but we were able to resolve them.
Okay, very good.
The auction, yes.
You may continue, Mr. Collin.
How do you want to proceed with this resolution, ma'am? Consent it?
Yeah, it could be roll call.
Yes, ma'am. Next, we have Resolution 21. This is from the Department of Public Works, Wahim Moneter, Director. Resolution, please mute yourself if you're not on the council. Next, we have Resolution 21-017, a resolution authorizing contract to Buck County International, Inc. for maintenance and repairs of heavy-duty vehicles, dump trucks, and sanitation trucks for various divisions for the City of Trenton Department of Public Works through New Jersey State Contract Number T-2108-89266 in an amount not to exceed $75,000.
Consent agenda, if no one has any questions?
Yes, ma'am. We have, that is it for the resolutions. We will have two ordinances for introduction. First is Ordinance 21-2, a bond ordinance providing for improvements to various school buildings and grounds to the city of Trenton and the county of Mercer, New Jersey, appropriating the aggregate amount of $3,615,000, therefore, and authorizing the issuance of $3,650,000 in bonds or notes for the city to finance the cost thereof.
President McBride?
Yes, go right ahead, Councilman Blakely.
Thank you, President McBride. Do we have a representative from the school board? Someone from the Facilities Department?
Yes, this is Acting Superintendent Afonso Yano on the call with me tonight. We have Dwayne Mosley, our head of Buildings and Grounds.
Okay, thank you very much. Can you just kind of give an overview of the rationale for these projects? And, you know, I'm just curious about, you know, why they're being considered and, you know, so I can just have the information to vote on it. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Good evening.
Thank you, Dwayne. This is Mr. Mosley. So, Dwayne, you'll take over, please. Thank you.
Yes. Yes, good evening, Council President and members. This is Dwayne Mosley. I'm the Facilities Administrator for Trenton Public Schools. What you have before you basically are a number of projects that are, some are not deemed as eligible for state funding. Other projects have been submitted to the state and have been rejected, and therefore are entitled to be submitted as part of the Board of School Estimates for part of the resolution with the Board of School Estimates. A number of these projects are health, well, the vast majority of these projects are health and safety issues that the district has basically taken on and submitting for funding support from, through the Board of School Estimates as through an ordinance through you guys. I didn't get in, I don't know if you want me to get into any particular projects that you might have any questions or concerns about, but like I made mention too, that, you know, these projects are detrimental to the health and safety and ultimately could be pertinent with emergency projects that would certainly overcome and part of the general budget of the district.
Okay. Can you actually just talk about the major projects that are priorities? So the big-ticket items in this group of projects?
Well, we have boiler systems that are basically, that were, you know, initiated with the construction of the building, and they have certainly succumbed past their useful life with the building itself, and at this point are beyond repair. We're just basically throwing money at them just to keep the units running. We have a couple of facilities that are operating on just one boiler with the other one constantly being patched just to maintain, you know, the HVAC and heating systems in various buildings. We have some, we have some, I'm sorry?
Listen.
We also have projects that are related to the flooring systems in various buildings. We right now have submitted what we deem as emergent projects to the state, the SDA, for their consideration for approval, which have yet to be approved, that affect the HVAC steam systems in various buildings. And as a result, with the steam that's being released on the under, I'm getting some feedback from the systems that's underneath of some of our subfloors and coming up through the piping system and into the classrooms, causing some of the floors to lift. A lot of our older buildings have some of the wood flooring systems in them. And as a result, we have tripping conditions that are hazardous certainly to the staff and students in those particular areas. In addition to that, underneath of some of our wood flooring system, actually, the vast majority, they have a hazardous substance that's referred to as nail creek. And once this nail creek certainly is exposed or damaged in any way, it becomes friable, which is asbestos-containing material. So we're asking for some funding sources to assist with replacing a lot of these flooring systems to prevent this from occurring. I know we also have on the agenda the athletic fields and the turf field, which has been on the agenda actually for quite some time now. And I've come before this board, and certainly some of the members probably refer, might be able to recall, and then others may go a little bit, that might be new, might not be as familiar. We had asked for funding for the turf field, basically for maintenance purposes with the loss of the staff and decrease, I should say, reduction in force. We're dealing right now, we have one groundsman that's out at the high school, and certainly with the turf field, it would help with maintenance and the efficiency of maintaining the field with the use of multiple sports and sporting events to be able to utilize it in addition to keeping up with 21st Century with our new high school and also some of the surrounding districts. I'm not sure if some of the other projects, the health and safety, the sidewalks and things of that nature, of course, there are health and safety issues that we're dealing with, our playground situations and surfaces throughout the district as well. All of these projects, as I made mention to, alluded to earlier, are health and safety concerns.
Thank you so much for such a thorough outline of these projects and support 100%. Thank you.
Council President?
Councilwoman Caldwell-Wilson?
Yes. Could I have Mr. Cruz come on the call? I need to ask him a question about these bonds.
I am here.
Mr. Cruz, I know in the past, this, not necessarily this council, but we've approved millions of dollars in bonds for maintenance at the Board of Education. Who monitors those bonds and the expenditures made from the, drawn down from those bonds? Do we know if there's any money left over from other bonds that can be utilized?
I will defer that answer to the superintendent.
Excuse me, Caldwell-Wilson, mute yourself so therefore we will be able to hear the superintendent.
Okay, thank you. So I believe the question was on monitoring of the bonds and how those monies are addressed. I don't have that exact answer in front of me right now, so I'd have to research that and report back to city council with a clear outline of how those funds are being expended. Our business office, our business administrator is down on the call this evening. She could provide an update. I just don't have that information in front of me at this moment, unless she has any.
Hello?
Go right ahead, Councilwoman Caldwell-Wilson.
So, we have never had any report, we have never had the Board of Education come to us and give us an update on their expenditures from the bonds, what is drawn down, what is left over, whether there's old bonds that can be canceled. And I certainly would appreciate someone coming and making a presentation to this council regarding the bonds and the expenditures and how much indebtedness you have in bonds. I would appreciate that.
Council President, superintendent, if I may?
Please, Mr. Mosley.
Our controller and assistant controllers in district work directly with Ms. Shonar. All of our projects are monitored and as they are completed, and we make our submissions for any reimbursements. They are sent to Ms. Shonar directly. She works directly with our assistant controller, who is over top of the Facilities Department. And all of that information is, as I made mention to, is documented and noted in each of our submissions or any of our invoices to the city for reimbursement.
So, Mr. Moses?
Mosley.
Mosley, Mr. Mosley, this is Councilwoman McBride. So I am aware of the fact that there is some bonds that have been, that were allocated, and there were, there's $70,000 left from a bond in 2010. There's $78,000 left from a bond in 2011. There's $273,000 on an outstanding bond that was taken out in 2018. What I would like to do is I would like to be able to have a conversation with Mr. Cruz and Ms. Shonar to see if we can shut, close those, close the outstanding balance of those bonds out. Because even though we issue this new bond and with the monies that are, if there's a bond out there from 2010, and we're in 2021, that's over 11 years, if there's a bond out there from 2008, those bonds need to be closed out. The remainder of the balance of those bonds need to be closed out. So I did have Attorney Razat look into how many bonds have been issued and the outstanding balance on all of the bonds that you do have. And I will be moving forward to shut those bonds out that are 10 years older or more that have not, that were remaining from a project that was, that has been completed, and the outstanding balance is still out there. I want to move to have those bonds, that money, closed out. So I will be working with Ms. Shonar and Mrs., the business administrator from the Board of Education, and Mr. Cruz to try to get those bonds closed out so that if you come before us again for any more bonds, then we can probably repurpose those, something to that effect. But there are some outstanding monies out there that have not been allocated for any project, and the bonds are over 10 and 11 years old.
Understood.
All righty.
Council President?
Yes, go right ahead, Councilwoman Vaughn.
Yes, I have a couple of questions for Mr. Mosley and Mr. Yano. So, there is some concern about a couple of the line items that you are allocating the funds to, and one of them is around buying bleachers for Stokes School.
Yes, ma'am.
And here we are, we are in the midst of a pandemic, right? And a lot of these funds are for emergent funds, as you just mentioned, for, you know, mainly to address your HVAC system. And we want to make sure that HVAC system is COVID-ready, right? Have you outlined that requirement to your contractor? That the HVAC systems have to be COVID-ready for the, for these facilities? For these buildings?
Yes, we have. Superintendent will take the order.
Okay.
We have, in fact...
What about the bleachers at Stokes School? Why would we need to replace them? My understanding is that Stokes School, that is in my ward, is not even open. So why, that's not an emergent project?
The Stokes School, at the time that the actual Board of School Estimates met and voted, and this was presented to them, the school was an active facility. Certainly, the district, and I can't speak any further, the superintendent will speak in terms of what the proposed plans are for projects moving forward. But with the understanding that the Stokes School can be utilized at any point and is currently occupied, the goal is to make sure that the bleachers do meet any type of standards as far as utilization for the gym itself. Currently, there are multiple bleachers that don't open, and as a result, we're creating a health and safety issue for students that go in there and enter the building and try to utilize the gym, which...
Okay. And the other one is the arti... Yep, and the other one is the artificial turf? Is that an emergent need right now in the midst of COVID? Do you think that most of the money should be allocated to meet some of the COVID initiatives or projects or remedy some of the issues that are direct result of addressing the pandemic and preparing our buildings and our facilities for, to minimize the impact of the pandemic rather than spending the, this coveted bond money on things like a turf field over at the high school?
So I would like to, if I may, Mr. Mosley, when this list of items for the Board of School Estimates, the list of capital projects was produced, it was April 3rd of 2019. So at that point, we're not dealing with the pandemic and all of the issues that we have been addressing. Mr. Mosley has been deemed to charge to make sure all of our buildings are ready for reopening to ensure that the air quality is proper, that the air circulation has been updated. We've been using district funds and also federal funds to get our buildings ready. So in 20, in April of 2019, this Board of School Estimates, the field became part of that project because the school was ready to reopen. It was going to be launched, and it was seen at that time as an emergent need due to the quality of the high school football field, which at times can become unplayable. And as Mr. Mosley mentioned earlier, we would like to expand the use of that field. Going back to Stokes, the Stokes bleacher project is to make sure that the bleachers are ADA compliant. There is a plan in place to bring children back into Stokes Elementary School in the future. And right now, the building is being used as a program for students who need daycare during our COVID school closures. So we need to make sure that the bleachers in that building don't pose a safety hazard to the students who are using the building.
So there are, so what organization or daycare program is operating out of the building now?
The name of the program is, it's Grant 94 Feet Program. It's a program that we've used for many years as an after-school provider of acad... of academics and sports programming.
And the school is open from what time to what time with this program?
It's like a regular school day, matches our school window. So it's eight AM.
It's actually seven AM until five AM.
So how did you, is that school, I mean, is it, is the facility, has it been upgraded? Because that school has been closed for over two years.
Yes.
I didn't know there were any constructions, any construction or enhancements that were being done on Stokes School. Like, I mean, you know, is that building even habitable, right? It has been closed for quite some time, right?
It was closed a couple of years back, prior to the program shutting down. However, since that time, we've put a new replacement roof on the building itself. We've added air conditioning in each of the classroom facilities. So in addition to that, it does meet all the lead and water testing that's required from the state. In addition to any fire or any hazards from the Fire Marshal from DCA, they also carry out their inspections. So the school is being up kept as if it's still in full operation.
Okay. That's all that I have. So the HVAC systems, so the other thing that I would ask is that, how was it decided which schools and which site and which infrastructure will get, will get an allocation or get addressed, right? Because a lot of, I mean, you have a lot of schools in the district, and some schools seem to be getting more attention than others. So how is that being determined?
The list is based on prioritization. Unfortunately, with the Board of School, well, I'm not going to say unfortunately, it's fortunate. With the Board of School estimates, we can only initially submit projects that are deemed as not eligible for funding for, for projects unless we've gone to the state and they in turn reject it. So projects such as sidewalks and football fields and surfacing, bleachers, things of that nature, even roofing systems, if you're not trying to replace the entire roof on the school, then it's not deemed as a capital project, it's as a maintenance project, and in turn, it's not eligible for state funding. So these are the projects that we kind of prioritize when we submit these, these projects as part of the capital improvement plan.
Okay, so the thing that I will say is, I guess, I mean, the, like for instance, Junior Three, well, I know it's not called Junior Three anymore, but the high school over there on Parkside and West State, right? There's, you gotta be doing some- Yeah, you're gonna be doing some work over there, right, with this bond money, correct?
In the last three years, we put, the district through its general budget has put well over three million dollars into the building, replacing the roofing system. The old, the old Trenton Central High School auditorium seating was all replaced and refurbished in the auditorium. We restored the gymnasium floor in the facility. All the areas have been painted in the building, as well as the flooring system in the corridors have been replaced and upgrading to the lighting system. So a large number of, a large, I should say, a large amount of funding has gone into the facility to make sure that it's being maintained and up kept.
Okay, alright, very well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming, Mr. Mosley.
Anytime, thank you.
Mr. Collins, you may continue.
Yes, ma'am. Last, we have Resolution Twenty-One, I'm sorry, ordinance Twenty-One dash three. An ordinance authorizing the execution of a lease agreement between the City of Trenton, State of New Jersey, and Community Loan Fund of New Jersey, Inc. Doing business as the New Jersey Community Capital with respect to the East Trenton Library Community Center project.
That's the one that we just had a long conversation about. Did anyone want to roll call this ordinance?
Well, it's got to be roll called, ma'am.
Okay, alright, great, thank you.
Just noting it for the record. If anybody had any questions, though, and we had discussed this already, if you have any further questions, please let me know and I'll send it to Mr. Delo.
Thank you.
And that is it for the docket, ma'am. I guess next we would move to public comments on the docket items only, if you'd like to proceed.
Definitely.
Okay, members of the public wishing to be recognized, please raise your hand. I will seek recognition from the Council President for you, one by one. Does anybody at this time wish to be recognized? We have, first, we have Mr. Algenon Ward, Council President.
Go right ahead, Mr. Ward.
Good evening, City Council. My name is Algenon Ward. I live at six eighty-eight Dr. Martin Luther King Junior Boulevard here in the city. City native, born and bred here in the city of Trenton. I like to address the topic of the East Trenton Library. I'm also a member of the Trenton Historical Society. And as such, we've looked at the East Trenton Library for many years as one of the historical assets of our Trent, of Trent. It was originally used in seventeen hundred fifty, which makes it one of the original buildings in our city. It was owned by Samuel Dickinson, which Dickinson Street is named after. And someone mentioned that his, one of his descendants was actually a general in the colonial army. So as just a historical artifact, that building has to be stabilized. And the longer it takes to keep it stabilized, the more it's going to be. Now, the East Trenton Collaborative has worked for many years to restore it back as a library. But because of all of the different machinations they had to go through, the quickest method they found was the project that they were put forward. But I'd also like to point out, it's the people in the neighborhood who are closest to this project that have been poring over the plans of what they plan to do there. And it's, I've been there when they've discussed these things in detail and reached a consensus about how they would move forward. Many of them are there here tonight. Remember that libraries itself is an educational institution, it's an adjunct to education. And many of us, and Councilman Blakely pointed out how these places are essential adjuncts to formal education, as well as programming, it's non-traditional. So in the end, we'd like to see this work expedited. And the planning that, that you're talking about, I'm sure will be readily available. But the first thing we need to do is make sure that that structure is adequate and protected from further deterioration. And if we have sources of money that are willing to spend the money now, we should do everything to get that done. And the question of its final disposition can be settled as we first make sure we have a building to work with. So I would, I would urge the City Council to, and by the way, another aspect of this is that I would hope that the City Council representatives would take into account the wishes of the people who sent them there to represent them. And that we resist the temptation to know better what the people want than they do. So listening to the people directly is key to moving our city forward. So I would just urge that the City Council act with alacrity and not delay it by process, because the building is not going to wait. The weather is not going to wait for you to make up your mind. You have to stabilize this place first, and that's my comment.
Thank you. Can you hear me clearly?
Yes, ma'am.
Yep, yes, we can.
Okay, cool. My name's Lydia Thornton, twelve nineteen West State Street, Trenton. I agree with Algenon as far as stabilizing the building. I think it's critical, partly because it's a historic landmark and partly because it's a library. We have one library in the city of Trenton that's open. I understand that before my time, there was budget issues, there was this, that, the third. We have four buildings that are, I guess, labeled as libraries right now. And unfortunately, there is less impetus to look at reopening those to serve our citizens and particularly our children. I'm a library science major. I grew up in libraries from the time I could walk. And I know how vital they are. They're even more vital now to our communities for hotspots, for computer access, for things that maybe some people don't have in their home. They can use our libraries for. That's what they're there for. But we've let those buildings sit. One of them, at least, I've heard, still has books and videos and everything else in it, which is even more sad to me. And the question was asked and never answered, whether that building, when restored, would become part of the Marshall County Library System. And it was kind of blown by as unimportant. That's really important. And I'm hoping that the council looks at that as an important issue when restoring this and looking at the rest of our libraries. The other thing I wanted to speak on was the schools, because they kind of tie together. And if we have bonds that are over ten years old, that haven't been utilized or closed yet, that's a problem. Because it says that the accounting and the money and the finances are not being watched, managed, and controlled on a yearly basis, to my mind, the way they should be. The other side of this, and Councilwoman Vaughn raised it well, is why are we doing these projects? Even if that's what the bond was written for two years ago, three years ago, we don't need that right now. So why would we bond money for something that's not needed right now when we have other needs? I'm not an expert on bonds. I don't know exactly how they work. But I would love, maybe on Thursday or sometime, for somebody to educate the public on why there can't be a change to the bond or cancel that bond and reissue for things we actually need. Replacing the turf doesn't seem like it's emergent. Now, if you look down my street at Junior Three, that's emergent. Because that building is falling apart in front of my eyes every week. Different little chunks fall off, different, and I can't even imagine what the inside is like. And it's only two years that it hasn't been used. It was bad when it was in use. Now it's just being let to deteriorate. And this is what unfortunately has become a pattern of behavior in the city of Trenton, is we allow our beautiful, historic, or just important buildings to sit empty and deteriorate. And it's a tragedy. I mean, drive up West State Street all the way and drive back down and see how many houses are either boarded up, falling apart, because they've been allowed to just sit. And we can say all we want, well, but that's the owner. They can do whatever they want with it. No. Okay, we own Junior Three. Are we collectively going to do something with it, or are we going to let it fall apart? The last point I will make is, I was told today that there are at least four businesses in our downtown Warren Street corridor that are up for sale, the building itself. That's a concern. That's an exodus that we cannot afford. And whether it's the Economic Development Department, whether it's the council, whether it's the citizens ourselves that need to come together and take some kind of action to stop the exit and the sale of all these buildings. I challenge anybody in the call right now to follow up on some of the auctions that were done for these extraordinary amounts of money and see how many of them actually follow through and finalize those sales and who they go to and what they do with it. Because there's a pattern here that's becoming clearer and clearer of buying up. It's called land banking, a friend of mine taught me a few years ago about. We need to be very careful in the city of Trenton, because we're being land banked. And the question is who's doing it and what their plan is. I'll close with that. Thank you so much for hearing me and for having this public. Appreciate you all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Council President, we have Ms. Lori Johansson.
Go right ahead, Mr. Johansson.
Hi, everyone. Thank you, Council, for your time. My name is Lori Johansson. I live on West Street. And as a Trenton resident, I would like to voice my strong support for the renovation of the historic East Trenton Library. We need more community spaces for residents, families, and youth. Access to non-structured activities have been found to reduce youth violence. I too care about libraries, so I appreciate that all of you do as well. But I hope you also see the benefits of having one less abandoned property and one more positive space for Trentonians. This renovation would be a step, an immediate step, to having a library-like space, not a step away from the neighborhood having a library. I hope you all will see the importance of transforming an abandoned building into a space residents can actually enjoy and vote to support this valuable initiative. The neighborhood definitely deserves it, so that's all. I just wanted to voice my support. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, Council President, we have Ms. Kim Booker.
Jessica, right ahead, Ms. Booker.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, good evening. I am Kim Booker, and I am a resident of East Trenton, forty-eight Clag Avenue. And I am just speaking in support of the East Trenton Library. After being gone for twenty-five years, I returned to help my grandmother, who was very active in the community, Rebecca Lyles. She lived on Clag Avenue for more than eighty years. And it broke my heart to see the padlock on the gate of the East Trenton Library. I have spent numerous summers at the libraries. Ms. Jones, I know she worked there for decades. And I am in full support of having the library reopen and revitalized. I understand the importance of education, and I know that we tend to say that our youth are a product of their environment, but I also agree that they are a product of our expectations. So showing them that they matter and that we are building spaces or revitalizing spaces where they can go and safely do homework or get assistance with their needs would be very beneficial. Working in the Trenton Public School District and in Princeton, I saw the disparities in what is the resources available to those in Princeton versus Trenton. And I feel like this would definitely be an added resource for our children, not just in East Trenton, but for all of Trenton. So as we reimagine this facility, not to say that it should not be strictly a library, but we know we have other needs as well, as far as the community. I am in full support of the revitalization of the building. And thank you for having me.
Thank you.
Next, we have Ms. Bellamy. Council President, would you like to recognize Kathy Bellamy?
Go right ahead, Ms. Bellamy.
Ms. Bellamy, unmute yourself, please be recognized.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Hi, yes. Good evening, City Council. My name is Kathy Bellamy. I reside at fifty-four Tyrell Avenue. I've been living here for thirty-two years. And I attended the East Trenton Library when I was younger, much younger. And it has helped me tremendously. So it is definitely needed in our community, especially with the younger kids today having nothing to do, have a tendency to get bored and weary, and that's been trouble or when trouble attracted them or they're attracted to the trouble. So they need someplace to go to let out all that energy and explore what they have. So the East Trenton Library is definitely needed. And I agree with Kim Booker, yes, there's a difference between the learnings and it- and the advantages that you have in Princeton and you have here in the city of Trenton. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Ms. Sherry Garet, Council President.
Go right ahead, Ms. Garet.
Ms. Garet, please unmute yourself and be recognized.
I'm sorry, I hit the wrong one. Thank you, Council President and the council representatives and the public and administration. I wanted to address a few of the resolutions that were brought forth tonight. Two of them was adopted, the 21012, 21013. My question, I hope the information is going to be submitted to council in regards to that 80, 85% transitional aid, the 85%, percentage of the 85% of what was given in transitional aid for 2020. I wonder, does it include the cash that was received and the non-cash amount? Does that 80% is inclusive to both? Because that wasn't addressed. And if we're going to have to cut back, I think we are going to have to do some cuts. But that, those cuts should really come from the upper administration, the directors, because, you know, all those pay raises should be rolled back because we can't afford it. And there should be a letter submitted to my suggestion, a letter submitted by the administration with, in unison with the council to reiterate what was agreed upon in that meeting. So I would think the administration should list those agreements so we can get some clarity on that before any MOU was signed. Because my concern is if there is another MOU, because I, from my understanding that the last council meeting was that the MOUs were agreed to be signed based on what was discussed in that meeting. So there should be an outline of everything that was reiterated, reiterated in a letter or a memo, I don't care what it is, and have them respond to it. With 21014, in regards to the library, the East Trenton Library, I just want to say my experience for the East Trenton Library when I was, as an adult and as a child, I wanted to say, it brings me tears. It was the only library in the city that hosted black authors. And they even had books on tape where, you know, when I was at work or traveling or whatever, I could plug in. And there were even truck drivers of all races that used to pull their trucks up to the East Trenton Library to get those same books. And most of them were from black authors. I mean, they were, you know, non-fiction, no fictional books, storybooks, but they were fabulous. So I think they, you know, I hope that they, because I even tried to find out what happened to a lot of those ebooks that were in the East Trenton Library, from the main library, but they have no record of those books, I mean, those ebooks. Okay? For 21015, in regards to the demolition, as I stated before, I hope the administration would talk with DCA and Department of Environmental Protection because if you're going to demo these homes in Trenton, they need to be in blocks. That brings, that cuts the cost down. We get rid of a lot of these dilapidated houses or these buildings that are falling apart where you can, you can see inside of them outside of the building. So, you know, $600,000 or $35,000 a house is ridiculous. These houses, there's too many houses that need to be demoed. And we're doing one at a time. And you want to hire three or four contractors to do one or two houses around the corner when there's a whole street of houses that need to be taken down and at a lower cost than $35,000. And most of these contractors, I'm pretty sure that you're hiring these three or four contractors, the administration is hiring, probably was part of that, the demoing of homes on the state level. For 21016, better housing, why can't we just put, oh, why can't we just put all city properties up for tax sale? I don't understand. We have so many houses that's been sitting on a tax, been on the city tax roll. We talk about increasing taxes, but we still keep holding these houses. Put them all up on tax sale. And that requirement, you have to live in it for five or 10 years. And it can't be investors. For 2102, cut some of the line items out of the school as the other constituents have stated for the, for the bonds for the school. Because I only see two bonds that needs to be probably considered out of the list that's shown on the resolution. And two, what's going on? The school district is not opening back up for possible in-school learning until May 2021, maybe. So I just not really getting it. But hey, boy, if these were bonds that are maintenance issues, emergent maintenance issues that was considered in 2019, I'm really surprised you even brought this to council in 2021. It's not an emergency. We have a COVID issue that's not going away because of a vaccine. So the school should be prepped and ready with new systems to help deal with air quality, deal with, you know, the spread of this, any type of virus. This may not be the first virus that's going to affect us here in this country or in this city. And, oh, and one last thing. You know, Trenton has become a rent-seeking economy. You know, we, the purpose, I think, that this, we are boosting more rental, rental housing instead of home ownership because you don't, because if there's more rental income, you don't have to really pay for the labor. So maybe that's one of the reasons why the, 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 uh, uh, city workers don't get raises and haven't had a raise increase. But it's simple fact, as long as you have rental properties, you don't need a rental property and not whole ownership, you don't have to boost their, 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 their pay. But it's simple fact, most of, most of all, what should be taken care of is just pick up the phone call and make sure the landlord, town landlord keeps up the property. But the point is, it's not coming back into the city cove. So we need to change from a rent-seeking economy back to more of home ownership economy where it generates some jobs. Because with this rental way we're doing things in this city was almost like 80% rental, we're not generating any revenue. And we're still fighting about the same thing and the same conditions because we have transitional people in the city. We don't have people actually staying in a home for 10, 20 years. A large amount of people staying in their home 10, 20 years. Most of the people in the city are transitional. We need people who want to move into the city, live in the city, raise their kids, and improve the quality of life in the city. That's all. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, Council President, we have Caitlin Fair.
Go right ahead, Ms. Fair.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Council President, Caitlin Fair, 215 South Clinton Avenue. I just wanted to come on and speak in favor of the East Trenton Library project as well and speak to some of the points that were brought up. I live down the street from this. And for me, this would be a tremendous asset to the community. I agree with Ms. Garet that we should be looking to have people investing in building their lives in the city and wanting to attract people who are looking to be long-term residents and homeowners in the city. But in order to do that, we need to have resources and assets that would be attractive to people in the communities that we're seeking to have them purchase homes in and live in and create lives in. And I believe that we have the opportunity to do that with the North Clinton location and the East Trenton Library. I think it's important to recognize that, you know, there has been a lot of exploration about creating a branch of the library at this location. But it's just not something that is a possibility at this point due to the limitations of the Trenton Public Library system. So the goal and the hope is to create a space that can serve many of the same purposes and provide many of the same services as a branch of the library would, while also creating an opportunity for other activities and services to take place. And one of the things that has been proposed to take place there is a significant amount of job training and workforce development that would be offered to city residents in that space in addition to other workshops and activities that would create positive outlets and constructive activities in the community. That's something that, as a resident, I would like to see and be able to participate in. And as a community member would like to be able to have other community members and residents have access to as well. So I just wanted to make that distinction and also just voice my support for this project. I also think it's important to consider that what is being put forth is certainly better than the nothing that is currently being offered there and the possibility of that, that very historic building continuing to sit there vacant and deteriorating when we do have the opportunity and the funding available to make it an asset that is providing services to the community. So I just wanted to make that statement, and I thank you all very much. And I hope you enjoy the rest of your evening.
Thank you.
Next, we have someone identified as the letter T.
Sorry, that's me. I didn't put my full name.
Please identify your name and address for the record.
My name's Anthony Mendia. I am one of the community organizers at the East Trenton Collaborative. If I could just say a few words, just to wrap things up, I know it's a long meeting.
You have 10 minutes, sir.
Cool, thank you. So just to echo what Caitlin and all the residents have pointed out, the East Trenton Collaborative has worked with residents in that area consistently, doing outreach, bringing it up at our community meetings. They've been active in the planning process of the East Trenton Library. Many of them hold this building in very high regards. It's a very, they're very proud of this, this historic landmark in their community and very much wish to restore, put, restore this building and be able to use it once again. We have one of our residents on the call that wrote a book that, she did all her research at that library. So many of the residents that spoke tonight have a very unique connection to the building. So I just wanted to bring that attention as the, as one of the organizers working at the Eastern Collaborative, I had the pleasure to talk to folks about this historic landmark. And I, and if there are any residents in our neighborhood, please feel free to send them, send them our way, and we'd be willing to bring them in on the planning process as well. Thank you so much, council.
Thank you.
We have the acting school superintendent, Alfonso Leon.
Yes. Thank you. Do I have permission to speak? Yes, you do, sir. Thank you. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity again. I just wanted to point out that I, at one point in my career, I was the principal of Grant Elementary School, and I worked very closely with the East Trenton Collaborative. They supported our school and our students. So with appreciation, I want to just send that shout out to that organization, which is doing quality work and giving kids options for, for, you know, activities to do outside of the school day, which are very important. At times, it seems though that like, to, to support schools and support community centers, we're in opposition of each other, which shouldn't be the case. Where this is a citywide effort to improve our schools and improve these community centers. So I wanted to point out that with the West State campus, there have been approximately over $3 to $5 million improvements over the last couple of years with renovations, upgrades to auditorium, corridor lights, rear parking lot resurfacing. So the building has not been abandoned, is actually being prepared for an eventual reopening. As we'll share at a later date with your permission, I would love to be able to return and provide you with information on the work that our demographer is doing on the enrollment, the projected enrollment in the city of Trenton is projected to increase by over, or approximately 2,000 students in the next five years. So to prepare for that introduction and increase of students, we are upgrading our buildings and getting them ready to potentially reopen. So I wanted you just to hear from me that, you know, we are looking to get our buildings back online. And as of today, by the end of this month, our buildings are ready to reopen for students. It wasn't because we were lack of preparedness. We are prepared to open our buildings. Our HVAC systems have been upgraded and ready to go. Our pandemic procedures are in place. It's just that the community is not ready for the school to reopen due to the increase in infection that we're seeing in the city of Trenton and also in the county of Mercer. And also, our local health officials advise us not to reopen. So we are ready. I just want to make sure everyone understands on the call that we are ready to reopen, but we will do so when it is safe and appropriate. But we also must anticipate the needs of our students in the future. So as we plan and prepare for next year, which we're already talking about next year's budget development, we have to look at what resources do we have available so that we can get ready for this projected enrollment increase. So I look forward to having an opportunity to come back to this group and provide the information that will be presented to the Board of Education at this next Board of Ed meeting. So you could see our plan and our preparing around this projected enrollment increase of almost 2,000 students in the next five years. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Next, Council President, we have Ms. Addie Lee.
Yes.
Addie Lee, please.
Good af, good afternoon. I just wanted to echo the comments, and I didn't know the superintendent actually was speaking before me, but I just wanted to echo some of the comments that he made in terms of the fact that our schools currently have had access to specific rent funds that were available to us to put in such things as air purifiers and things that are going to prepare our buildings to receive our students. And so those funds are dedicated for those specific purposes. And so, because those funds are designated for those specific purposes, then those areas are, for the most part, taken care of. All the PPE, the dividers that are going to go up between students and between students and staff, all of those items are taken care of by a separate pot of funding. The capital improvement projects are a little bit different. And, you know, those particular funds are designed to, shall we say, upgrade some of our aging buildings. As you know, we have a few new schools. We have a lot of schools that are aging. And in fact, to bring those schools up to code and to improve the overall facilities, that's where the capital improvement funds come in. And so certainly, those are health and safety. You know, I heard some questions about whether or not those are health and safety-related issues. They are. They may not seem like emergent, but if we are to fully service our students and give them every opportunity as other students have, we have to bring our buildings up to code. That's a completely separate pot of money. If we don't receive funding in terms of supplemented by bond ordinances, then that's money that we have to take from other things to get those projects done. So again, the bonds are necessary. And if we value education and if we value giving our students the opportunities that other students have, then I ask you to favorably consider the request for this particular bond ordinance. Thank you.
Does anybody else wish to be recognized by the council?
Yes, my name is Faith Ann Pearson. I would like to be recognized, please.
Council President, Ms. Pearson?
Yes, go right ahead, Ms. Pearson.
Madam President and the City Council, I tried to get in last Thursday and I got disconnected, so I'm being on my good behavior now. I moved into the East Trenton area, I live at 135 Sherman, in 2011. I didn't know about the neighborhood, and by 2014, 15, I got to really enjoy it. I went into this library. I was stunned to see how beautiful it was inside and that it wasn't being utilized. I would like very much to see it get opened. This past year with COVID-19, the kids could have had a place to go to if it had been opened then, so that they could get their schoolwork done without having to rely on parents who were also working, also the buildings.
Ma'am, are you still there?
Yes. You hear me now?
Yes, ma'am, you faded out.
Okay, I'm sorry, real quick. The abandoned buildings. I drafted out by walking the East Trenton Collaborative area by foot during the COVID-19 ordeal between March and the time that we sat down with the mayor. And I wrote down every building number and went onto the OPRS to find out which ones were privately owned, owned by banks or companies, or the city owned. And I made up a list and gave it to the mayor. There are several that are in such deplorable condition. I'm hoping that the demolition that you have in this ordinance of 2114, I believe it is, uh, no, I'm sorry, 2115, that you guys push to have it done. Like the one young lady said, as soon as you can get four or five of the buildings taken down at one time within a sub, an area, people driving through will see that we are seriously taking care of the neighborhood. If you leave them left, they will abandon and people will not come or move into the city. Please go through the vote and pass these ordinances, especially for the library and the abandoned properties. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anybody else wish to be recognized? Any members of?
Yes, I would, I would like to speak. Can you?
What's your name, ma'am?
My name is Connie Johnson and you keep muting me, sir, and I'm not even speaking.
Aye.
She muted my, my phone throughout.
I have not muted you, ma'am.
In any case, I did say something earlier and I do apologize for speaking out of turn. But I was very much appreciative of, I don't know everyone's name, Mr. Blakely. I don't know what, I think he's a council person. I'm trying to take notes as I'm listening. It's been a very, very long meeting and I'm not going to speak very long. But I have to say this, I moved here from New York City. I moved here from an incredibly productive community in New York City. I moved from Fort Greene, Brooklyn, which is a place where there's million, multimillion dollar properties right next door to the Nets Stadium. So it's an incredibly vibrant, culturally vibrant community. I moved here very, very hopeful, very much believing that the same way Fort Greene had developed and developed rather quickly. I really believed, and I didn't know that much about Trenton when I moved here, but I really truly believed that this city is just such a very vibrant and place, a place of hope. But as I listened to all of, I don't really know who everyone is, but as I listen to this, I feel that there really is no plan. There's a lot of numbers being tossed around and there really isn't a serious plan to truly develop this city. Everyone is speaking about the East Ward and a library and I think that's wonderful. My husband is a journalist, Wall Street Journal, Barron's, all of that. I have thousands of books in my house, magazines and all that. I truly, truly believe in libraries, not just for this East Ward or, you know, and, and forgive me if I'm saying it incorrectly, but not just for their, as someone said earlier, throughout this city, in every part of every community, there should be a vibrant library, state of the art library that allows young people to be competitive throughout their education. And if they need a place to go, you know, junk to relax or unwind, those libraries should, should allow young people to do that. I completely agree with Mr. Blakely. Everything I'm hearing is a bunch of numbers and I'm no budget person. That's not what I do for a living. But to me, there's no plan. And for as long as I have been here, and I live in Berkeley Square, for as long as I have been here, I have not seen one significant change. I see nothing really happening. And to talk about asphalt is not necessarily what young people need and it's not necessarily what's going to make this community vibrant enough for someone else like me to move from New York City into Trenton and believe that this is a place where they can put their, you know, put their feet down and establish roots. And that's basically it. I would really like, honestly, for all of the chit chat about all these, because it sounds like such an enormous amount of money. Every single time I'm on these calls, you're talking millions and hundreds of thousands of dollars. And as I drive through this city, I don't see where it's going. So I really don't know. Maybe it's time for a change of the guard. And I'm not saying that in a disrespectful way. Maybe it's truly time for some fresh energy to come in on these councils and come up with new ideas and real plans and really try to turn this city into what I hope it can be. And I am not a long-term city resident, not at all. And that is it. And I appreciate your time. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anybody else wish to be recognized? Once again, anybody else wish to be recognized for public portion to speak on the docket items? Council's President, I don't see anybody else wishing to be recognized.
Motion to close public comment.
Hello?
Mary Horn.
Uh, Council's President, did you want to hear Ms. Horn?
Yes, definitely.
Yes, ma'am. Ms. Horn, please go ahead.
Yes, yes. Thank you very much, all that who are on this call. Just and to piggyback on what Lydia Thornton had said and to speak about Stokes Elementary School, which is in my neighborhood. I have not seen any, any activity that has gone on at that school. So in the midst of COVID, as Councilwoman had said in the West Ward, is that there are parents who are really stressed about their children that have disabilities. And Stokes School has been one of those facilities that had adhered to the parents of children with disabilities. And while they're home, the parents are really struggling with trying, with an effort to get their kids to comply with the virtual learning and online. And it just doesn't, at some point, does not work for children with disabilities. And Stokes School at one point had supplied that ability to help the parents and to help the students also. I have not seen a bicycle that has rode up to Stokes School and had an activity or facilitated anyone in that respect. Because as I said, we're, we're a neighborhood here and we were all concerned about having that brought back. And I'm hoping, I'm hoping that that would happen at some point, but it hasn't happened yet. So Stokes School is like a shuttered school right now. I haven't seen any activity. So monies that are being put into the school, I haven't seen anyone doing anything with it at this point. I would sure love to have that. We would all love to have that. And I hope someone could speak on that. If they could bring this back and help these parents with children of disabilities, if this school is gonna be and benefit the parents in all neighborhoods, all, all areas of city of Trenton. So I haven't said that with that. If it's not being utilized right now, I don't see putting money into that school until it's very, very clear that that's what it's gonna be used for, for any benefit to the schoolchildren per se. So, and number two, I'd just like to add to this, 2021 first quarter and second quarter tax bill. 21st first quarter estimated bill is due by February 10th, 2021. And we're being asked to pass the budget and people are being asked to pay their tax bill by this date. In the midst of COVID, where's the money coming from? People are out of work. People can't really prepare for that. There is such a thing called long-range planning. I know I worked in budgets and results for Fortune 500 company for years. Long-range planning. That means that before you submit money or ask for money, as far as passing a budget and putting, and there may be a liability on the taxpayers or, or, or on the backs of the taxpayer, which we're unsure of, but we're being asked to pass this budget. Now I think we need to be very clear on this. We just had a tax increase already. Where's the money gonna come from? Just speaking for myself and others.
Stop for mute. Excuse me, Ms. Horn, but I need the number nine.
Yeah, Ms. Johnson, please do not unmute yourself again. You're public portion time and we're getting a lot of feedback from your lines. So please stop unmuting yourself. Ms. Horn, please continue.
Okay, basically that's what I'm saying here because the, as I said, I'm, I'm, I'm sitting here reading it right now. 2021 first quarter estimated bill is due by February 10th. Where, where are the people gonna get the money from? But we're being asked to pass the budget. I would really like to hear more on this or more from someone who was at the meeting to speak and, and, and give some clarity to this, please. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Horn. Does anybody else wish to be recognized by the Trenton City Council? I have a motion on the floor from Council President McBride. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Council Vice President, Caldwell Wilson. All in favor of closing public portion?
That about the library. And I want to just kind of mirror what Ms. Connie Johnson talked about. It's not that I'm against the library because I'm certainly, I'm certainly is for libraries. Actually, that's one of the key, that, that was one of the key positions that I ran on, that I wanted to get the library open here in the West Ward. My concern is, is again, what Ms. Johnson talked about is that millions and millions of dollars come through the city of Trenton. But earmark for special programs and services, special programs like libraries, special programs like built out in enhancements of schools, right? But it never gets down to the people, it never gets down to those programs. Those programs and special projects never get completed. And when they do get completed, they look like crap. And I was astounded today. I have no faith that that East Trenton Library is gonna be state of the art, built out in a way that it deserves. I look at, I, I listened to Ben Delisle, Mr. Delisle and the folks who are part of the programming and project management team. They couldn't even tell you when the project is gonna be end and complete. They couldn't even tell you the overall cost of the initiative. That's a red flag. So I have no confidence at all of the program managers over at the Community Capital Court, that they're gonna turn that library into something that's a, a gem. And that's been the history of Trenton. They come to our council, they ask us to approve funding to do these projects, to facilitate these special programs, and they don't deliver. The money comes, actually, I'm gonna quote one of our employees over at the Water Works, Kristen, what was her name, Epstein. She came to council one day. She said, as fast as the money comes in, it goes out. And that's the story of Trenton. Millions of dollars come through our city. And the council, we approve it and we have no expectation or follow-up as to when it's gonna get done, how it's gonna get done. And we gotta raise our standards here in the city of Trenton. If we give people money, we have to hold them accountable. You can't come to us and ask me for 700 and three quarters of a million dollars and tell me you don't have a plan. And I'm supposed to say, oh, yes, I'm supposed to vote for it? Everybody wants a library. You couldn't find anybody on this call to say libraries don't make any sense. I, I wanna know about delivery. I don't, nobody bought the architects to this call. Tell us what the plan is, how they gonna build out the library, what it's gonna look like, when it's gonna be done. Altona Ward came to, came to council today and said, the infrastructure of the building is, 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 is not stable. So we're the structural engineers. Ben Delisle is the Director of Economic Development. That organization, New Jersey Community Capital, should have given the city a plan already. And, and everybody should be able to speak to it. Now I gotta wait a week to get it? If y'all want me to approve this initiative, I'm gonna approve so much money and funding over the past two years since I've been on this council. And just like Connie Johnson stated, look around this city. Look at our parks. How many times have we given BRC over a million dollars? Where is it going? Which is, as quick as it comes, as quick as we approve it, it goes, disappears. It leaves our city. New Jersey Community Capital is a New Brunswick. It's a New Brunswick. So I don't know. And I know since I've been on council, I've been hearing about this project. So I don't know why it's taken so long to get off the ground or, or, or show us what, they should have a plan already. They should know what the costs are. I have gone to other towns that have built out their brand new libraries, modernized them, they're highly state of the art. It takes money and commitment and planning. You just can't overnight build out a library. And certainly not that building because of its landmark attributes. So I am not confident in, 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 in New Jersey Community Capital or the East Trenton Collaborative to deliver or to expectation because they have no plan. They have no plan. Shame on you guys coming to council. Coming to Trenton City Council and without a plan and asking us to grant you $700,000. I have high expectations for Trenton. You don't come to my council and you, with my colleagues and ask us for money and don't have a plan. You wouldn't do that to other cities in Princeton or Summit or Livingston, New Jersey. But you come to Trenton City Council and think you could come here without a plan and we're supposed to just approve your project and give you that money. You need, I don't even think you have the expertise to deliver a library and do that building any justice. I don't know who, what contractors you have engaged, but every city I know that built a state of the art library, modernized it. They had architects, they have a library solution, always called a library development solution, solutioners. I wanna see some real plans. So go ahead, say Councilwoman Robin Vaughn is not supportive of libraries. No, I'm not supportive of the bull crap. And you're gonna come here and ask me for money and you don't deliver nothing, you're gonna take our money out of our city and give us nothing, but crap. What are you gonna do? Paint a few walls? Lydia Thornton said, we have a historic building over there on the corner of West Station School. The pillars are falling apart. Junior, junior three or Trenton High School, West it is now. Falling apart, but yet Mr. Mosley said that they invested millions of dollars in that school. We don't see it. Doesn't look like it. So don't come here selling us crap because we see. But anyways, I wanted to.
Excuse me, Councilwoman, Councilwoman. Excuse me, Councilwoman, Councilwoman. Mr. Colin, Colin. If they cannot mute themselves, eject them from this meeting, I will not be repeating myself. I've asked nine one seven six two seven to mute themselves. They keep coming on the line bringing interference to the council person speaking.
So woman, that's. So all I want to say.
I'm in my home alone. That is not.
So I just want to say that for the West Ward, we want to modernize, we want a modern library. We want it to be high tech. We don't want the walls painted. So in a few books that. So I, the other thing that I just want to quickly touch on is Ms. Razak's report. Ms. Razak, I read through your report. Are you on the line? Ms. Razak?
Yes, I am.
Yeah, I just saw that these companies, man, they have no black people working on their site. So what is the law department going to do about that?
Pardon me?
What is the law department going to do about that? I'm looking at these numbers. They have zero black people.
You said they have zero black people?
Yes. Look at, did you look at the report?
Yes, I did.
Mm hmm. Mm hmm. Yep. One Trenton resident, two Trenton residents. Are you kidding me? Well, we have to discuss this, but but they don't have any minorities on their projects. They're minorities, but they're not black people. They're not African Americans. Our city is fifty percent African American, thirty five percent Latino.
Thirty seconds, ma'am.
And fifteen percent Caucasian. Now, shouldn't those numbers mirror the makeup of our city? Ms. Razak? Hello? Ms. Razak? Is she, is she not on the call?
She's on the call.
Ms. Razak, are you going to answer the question?
Again, I didn't realize that I was on mute.
If you look at the Division of Public Contracts EO Compliance Minority Project Workforce from Laura Hendrickson. The city of Trenton lead line replacement, eight point four million dollars. He has laborers, labor is zero, two total, two minor, three, total three employees, total minority two, zero black, one Hispanic, one American Indian. These numbers? Operating engineer, total one. Zero black, zero Hispanic. Zero females, no females, no women.
I'm reading the report as we speak, but your TV is up so loud.
Did you look at these numbers?
Did I look at the numbers? Yes, I did. And I also looked at the.
This is for South State. South State, they have three laborers, two minorities, zero black, one Hispanic, one American Indian. And the city of Trenton is fifty percent black.
You're looking at the date of February the seventh, am I not correct?
No, I, I, I'm looking at the report that you gave me. But I'm not going to go through it now, but we will discuss this. I'm looking at this report is December twenty ninth, for a period of December twenty ninth, twenty nineteen to February first, twenty twenty.
That's correct.
They have zero African American.
Councilwoman Vaughn, I'm going to ask you to.
I'm just done. All right, I'm done, Council President. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Rodriguez.
Excuse me, excuse me, Council President.
Wait a minute. Who is that?
That's a clean woman coming back on.
No, you're not allowed to interrupt the council. I don't.
I wasn't, I wasn't interrupting.
Excuse me, excuse me. Councilman Rodriguez.
I have no comment.
Councilman Michelle.
I have nothing at this time. Thank you.
Councilman Harrison.
I first would like to give my condolences to Dwayne Harris on the passing of his mom and Mayor Guciar on the passing of his mother. We talked about the East Trenton Collaborative Library. It's a community center project, actually located in the North Ward. But it's library, it's a community center. We have to help rebuild this community. It's not about us on this council. We need to start realizing it's about the people. The budget, like you said, at the end of the day, we're in a meeting, the administration, the council, united together, you know, divided, we shall fall. We're getting in a room with the DCA and the state and we come out and we not sure what we have. So now we have to figure out what we have. So hopefully we can get in writing to find out how we can fix the budget. Let's see what else. The bonds, I did, I agree with my colleagues regarding the bonds for the school. We need to find out exactly if they're all bonds. Can we wipe them out, close them out before we move forward? And at the end of the day, like I said, we got to do what's best for the community. So we got to, like you said, we got to work on this budget and everything else. So thank you, everybody, for coming out tonight and have a good one.
Thank you, Mr. Harrison. Councilwoman Caldwell Wilson.
Yes, I too would like to give my condolences to the mayor and Mr. Harris and also to the council president for the passing of her family members this past few days. I want to thank East Trenton Collaborative and Partners and the community for their efforts on behalf of the East Trenton Library slash Community Center. The North Ward youth have not had a community center since two thousand and ten and have not had a library since two thousand and nine. This community is in dire need of a community center slash library. It can also be a safe haven for the children to learn, work, and play. So thank you also for your aggressive fundraising efforts. I am a hundred percent in support of your efforts. This wonderful historic building cannot, needs to be restored. And without your efforts, it would continue to decay and be an eyesore in the East Trenton area. I urge all of my council members to support this project. And seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars matching funds from the city is nothing in comparison to the amount of money that they have raised in order to restore this property, which by the way, has to go under the historic guidelines and certain professionals do have to work on this property. I would also say that, Ms. Vaughn, that they cannot give you the names of architects. They can't hire anybody until they have all their funding secured. So I would ask you to reconsider that. And before I go, I want to thank all the community for being on the calls tonight and taking an interest in this city. The superintendent, I want you to know that I appreciate your attendance at our meetings. This is a first for us. We never have anybody from the Board of Education attend our meetings, so we do appreciate it. This way we can develop a dialogue with you. And with that, I just wish everybody to stay healthy, wear your masks, and keep six feet apart. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Blakely.
Good evening, Trentonians. I have a couple of things that I'd like to talk about. Number one, I'd like to express my strong support of the East Trenton Collaborative's proposal to renovate the East Trenton Library, which is in the North Ward. This is, I believe, an innovative public-private partnership that will rescue a building that is in dire need of rescue. This building has been empty for years. It is not being used and we now have an opportunity to support an institution, the East Trenton Collaborative, that has done so much for the people of that community. I know how important and how hard the people that are associated with the East Trenton Collaborative works. And I will be supporting this initiative because I believe it brings hope to a building that presently is empty. And I believe that if this council has the opportunity to invest in a public-private partnership to support young people and the community in terms of having a space where they can avoid the pitfalls that all too often exist in the same community, I will support that every day of the week. I hope that we can also find other partners for other community organizations in, for other abandoned buildings in the city. Quite frankly, this city has had a long time to renovate existing libraries. They've been closed for a very long time. It does not look like they are going to be open anytime soon. I know that there was a state bond referendum that gave money to fixing libraries in terms of a supporting bond ordinances and getting state support from that. The Trenton Library didn't get a dime because they didn't apply, I believe they did apply, but they did not actually get any money. And so, as I mentioned, this is very important and I look forward to supporting it. The second issue that I'd like to discuss is the issue of the school district's bonds. As someone who works in public education, I'm a former teacher in Trenton. I'm a graduate of the Trenton Public Schools. One thing that really bothered me was the fact that many of our buildings were not all the way up to code. Many of our students attended schools that were in really bad shape. I attended the old Trenton Central High School. I spent my freshman, the junior year at the old Trenton High. And it was in pretty bad shape because it had, did not have the necessary maintenance planned and actually conducted. And so the reason why the school was falling apart was because the district did not invest the necessary funds in terms of keeping it up to date. And so you had a school that probably could have had a few more decades if it was taken care of in the way that it is or that it should have been. And so I think that these bond ordinances are really important because they ensure that our schools are up to date. And I want to talk about the turf field. Now, we have really good athletes in the city of Trenton and I'm sure they are really upset when their facilities don't match their counterparts in the suburbs. That's no longer a question at the main high school because we have now a state of the art high school. But I also believe we should have state of the art athletic requirements or athletic facilities. And I believe that the turf field is an important investment so that our kids can have the same exact things that students in the suburbs take for granted. And so for that reason, I look forward to supporting this bond ordinance. And finally, I think it's very important that we learn from the last two years. We've been on council for roughly two years and it has been a very, very, two and a half years, and it's been very tumultuous. We have two years left to get it right. And so I do want to say that I am heartened by the conduct of this meeting. You know, our meetings generally are very tumultuous and passions run high. And I'm very glad that we were able to stick to the issues tonight. I hope this continues because we have a huge job in front of us to make Trenton better on the time that we're here. You know, we have two more years to go and I would really implore the administration not just to have individual departments, but there needs to be a cohesive, cohesive plan from the top to tell us their vision for the city. The mayor did not have a transition report. He didn't have, I think he had a team, but there was no report actually given. There needs to be a vision, a plan, so that we can get behind the plan. I think that this idea of the East Trenton Collaborative investing in the East Trenton Library is a perfect example of how that should have been a part of a written or spoken plan where every community would have something similar done. So that we could see that this particular proposal fits in into a broader amount of, or a broader proposal. And so I really hope that the administration does a better job of actually sharing their vision. Because I think what happens is you see a lot of tension at these council meetings because there's no particular plan. And I would hope that there is a plan and that that plan is executed and shared with us. And finally, I will be hosting a Facebook Live overview on Wednesdays after council meetings on my Facebook Live at Darrell Blakely, my Facebook page, to go over many of these issues. I look forward to anyone who is on social media participating. I used to have a community meetings, but you know, they've been on hold because of COVID. So I'm going to do the next best thing in utilize technology so that we can communicate, I can answer some of your questions, and we could have a broad discussion about the issues that matter to all of us as Trentonians. I would also like to send my sincerest condolences to the mayor, to the mayor's mother, to the mayor for the loss of his mother as well as our former city clerk, Dwayne Harris, on the loss of his mother as well. Mothers are very important. I wouldn't know what to do if I didn't have my mom. And so my prayers are with the two of you as well as for the relatives of President McBride who have transitioned on the glory. Thank you very much. Have a good day and I look forward to seeing everyone on Wednesday at my community meeting on Facebook Live as well as the council meeting on Thursday. Take care and have a great day.
Thank you. I would like to thank each and every one of you in the public that has come out this evening to offer your opinions and to speak on your various concerns. I would also like to thank the directors for coming to this meeting and filling the questions that the legislative body have had. But I also would like to talk about Trenton and how we move forward. How do we move forward? The one thing that all of us need to recognize is that the mayor and his administration and the legislative body, the council, should all be functioning as one. Because although we are separate branches, one can't get anything done without the other. And so I would like to extend an olive branch to the mayor and his administration to begin the process of moving this city forward. I am appealing to the mayor publicly to drop the lawsuits, the unnecessary lawsuits against the council to stop spending the taxpayers' money. Because although we are separate branches, one cannot do anything without the other. I want to work with this administration on this budget. I believe that we can work together to move the city from the MOU. But in order to do that, there has to be a plan. I know for a fact that we can open up a library in every. I know for a fact that we can open up a library in every section of this city with the CDBG grant money and getting private donations from big corporations and partnering with our nonprofits. I believe that we have to look high and low to understand that we're not here to represent ourselves and our personal interests, but we're here to improve the quality of life for our residents. I believe that the number of murders that we had last year should not occur again because we need to convene a commission, uh, some type of board where we have experts bringing in best practices, like Mr. Ramsey out of Philadelphia, bringing in the, uh, a person like the, uh, Congresswoman that ran the Orlando Police Department. We need to get off of our seats and start going to different states and different countries, finding out what the best practices are for violence, for gang violence, for community violence, for the poverty in our city and how to address it. We cannot just keep arguing and going in front of Judge, Judge Jacobson. We need to come up with some serious planning. And my olive branch tonight is to work with this administration to get through this budget and begin to find some professionals that can come into this city for best practices with the gun violence and the gang violence and put some type of commission together so we do not lose any more lives. That is dear to me because today is my son's birthday. My son would have been 49 years old had he lived. I'm only sitting on this council so another mother will not be grieving and can't get up out of the bed on her son's birthday. But in order to do that, we're going to have to work together. All of this petty, personal bickering, it will get us nowhere in the year of 2021 as it has not gotten us anywhere in the past. So I am employing this administration to come to the table and let us begin to look for some positive ways to turn this city around. I believe the housing, we should have a program, a housing program, so that we can give our residents and our employees that work for the city of Trenton as first-time home ownership, right to purchase some of these houses that we have to auction. We should not have an employee in our city that makes $40,000 and work five days a week from nine to five and can't afford to get her family or his family out of an apartment into home ownership. That should never occur in the city of Trenton. We have some of the best paying jobs in the city and we pay these people, we, because we want the talent, but we want that talent to make a difference. We're not paying you $135,000 to take the money out of the city and leave the city with no positive results. We need results. We're one of the highest paying cities in this tri-state area. And I want it to show. I want it to show when people drive down the street. I don't want the roads to bust up their rear ends. I want the streets to reflect the money that we pay our directors. And so I am saying to the administration and to my colleagues, we are going to do better. We're going to do better because the people deserve better. We're going to do better because that is the oath that we took. So let's tighten up our belts, let's get down to this budget, let's get DCA to give us whatever they need to give us in writing. Let's start looking for people that can help us turn this violence around and shut those numbers down. You're never gonna stop it all, but you can shut those numbers down. You can reduce those numbers. We need to have a homeowner program for our employees for first-time home ownership. These are the things that we need to do. We need to get it done because all of us together, we could do it. I am confident in that. So let us put our personal vendettas aside. I am offering up an olive branch to the administration and all of my colleagues. Please understand, this is not about any one of us personally. We are acting on the best interest of 84,000 people and we need to always remember that. It need to be the first thing on our minds when we sit in these seats and make the decisions that we make. And with that said, I thank each and every one of you. I look forward to working with you and I know that we are going to do a better job moving forward. It is demanded of us to do a better job. Thank you. Mr. Colin, if, um, we can get a motion to close the, the civic comment, I'd appreciate it.
So I have a motion to, uh, actually just be a motion to adjourn, council president.
Okay.
Motion to adjourn.
So, uh...
Most of my council vice president, Cole Wilson, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Mr. Blakely, all in favor of adjourned.
All right.
Any opposed? So ordered, we are adjourned at 10:07 PM. Everybody have a blessed evening. Condolences to Mayor Gucciara and Mr. Harris for the loss of their mothers, for Mother Harris and Mother Gucciara. Be well, everybody, have a great evening.
Thank you.